Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction in which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of the city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who work and transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chau.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rook.
Here.
It's nine present.
Any memorials? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Nicholas Cephalaeus, better known as Nick the Barber. Born in Lowell, Nick was married to the love of his life, Joyce Dagomas Cephalaeus, for forty years, losing her in 1999. A lifelong resident of Lowell, Nick was a graduate of Lowell High School. He went on to receive his barber certificate in Boston, graduating in 1957. He opened Nick's Barber Shop in Lowell and operated the shop for fifty-six years. Nick was very proud of his service to his country, served in the United States Navy during the Korean Conflict from 1951 to 1955. He served overseas for thirteen months on the USS Shenandoah, AD-26. Nick enjoyed getting together with his shipmates during the reunions and had collected memorabilia over the years. Nick was a member of the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church in Lowell, a member of the VFW Post 662, the Greek-American Veterans, and a life member of Disabled American Veterans. Nick was an avid tennis player who had a once-in-a-lifetime experience of playing in a match against Bobby Riggs. Nick leaves behind his son George, his daughter Sandy, three grandchildren, and two great-grandsons. We offer our condolences to his family relatives, his many friends that include Billy Zounis, Harold Mostjavides, and the gang at the Pizza Club. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Maurice Cohen, known to us as Morris Cohen, former owner of 980 WCAP. Mr. Cohen and his late brothers Israel Ike and Theodore Teddy Cohen were the owners and operators of Northeast Radio, Inc. in Lowell for over sixty years. Mr. Cohen was president of Northeast Radio, Inc. from 1994 until he sold his business in 2008. 980 WCAP broadcasts with 5,000 watts of power. Mr. Cohen was involved in all aspects of business, from managing contacts, hiring employees, advertising and infrastructure, including, as needed, personally climbing the radio tower for maintenance and repairs, of which I believe was almost 200 feet tall. God bless him there. Mr. Cohen stated that what we know today is the Salvation Army Radio Telethon, bringing thousands of dollars in an organization that he was very much dedicated to. He is survived by his longtime companion Helen Lebold, sympathy to his relatives, friends, and many WCAP listeners. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chambers to all those that have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. We can dock in the chambers? I'd just like to get the clerk's business out of the way. We need approval to accept the minutes of the election laws redistricting subcommittee on July 6th, city council special meeting July 6th, city council meeting July 13th, city council special meeting July 22nd. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Elliott. We have guests here. I need a motion to spend the rules to bring in citation for Veteran of the Month Cliff Krieger, by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Elliott. So we have guests in the chamber tonight. We have Mr. Eric Lamash here. We have the commissioners, Mr. Gaffney, Mr. Cody, and Ms. Van. Earlier in the chamber, in the mayor's reception, we gave a citation to Colonel Krieger for his thirty years of military service. So if you'd like to stand forward, Mr. Krieger, I'll read your citation, and we thank you for your service. Be it here known to all that in the city of Lowell, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, hereby offers congratulations and recognizes Colonel Clifford Krieger. For his thirty years of military service, Colonel Krieger grew up in California, began his military training with the Air Force Academy. After graduation, he was sent to Selma, Alabama, for pilot training, and then to Tampa, Florida, for F-4 training, where he met his wife Martha. After this, he was deployed to Da Nang, Vietnam, where he flew fighter bomber missions, including 100 missions over North Vietnam. After this, he went on several missions around Europe and the U.S. before volunteering to go back to Southeast Asia in 1972. During 1973, Colonel Krieger flew missions over North Vietnam, Cambodia, and Laos. After this, Colonel Krieger spent more time on missions around Europe and U.S., serving in the Philippines as a deputy operations director and a U.S. CO commander of the Philippine Air Defense. In 1983, Colonel Krieger began serving in the Pentagon in charge of Air Force doctrine. He then served as the commander of the 86th Fighter Wing at Ranscombe Air Base and chief of Joint Staff Strategies Division. His final assignment was as the first chair, Joint Chief of Staff Chair, and Course Director at the National War College. After retiring as a full colonel in 1994, Colonel Krieger was employed at Dynamics Research Corporation, quickly became a dedicated citizen of Lowell. He served as the chair of the city's Republican City Committee, member of the city's Continuum for Care Committee, and a member of the city's Hunger Homeless Commission. He also assists with Bible study at his church and is a city licensed commissioner. Now therefore, I may, John Leahy, hereby offer all the best to Colonel Clifford Krieger. The entire city of Lowell is proud to honor him, thank him for his distinguished individual for his thirty years of service in the military and his service to the greater Lowell community, given this 27th Day of July by myself and the entire city council. Thank you, Clifford. Clifford, you'd like to say something? You can say something if you'd like. Is the button on? I don't know how that new mic works. It is, okay.
Maybe I need to speak into it a little better. I really appreciate this. I'm apparently the first one in several months to be so honored, and I'm honored by that, that we're bringing it back. Our veterans have served and need thanks, and I appreciate that. My wife Martha and I, every once in a while, reflect that neither of us have ever lived anywhere as long as we've lived here in Lowell. My wife's missing on grandparent duty, so that, of course, is most important. I've enjoyed being in Lowell. Lowell is my city. I enjoy bringing what I have, my experience, to Lowell and learning from people in Lowell. And I thank all of you. I may not agree with all of you all the time, but I thank all of you for serving and helping us keep Lowell moving forward and being the great city it is. Thank you.
Thank you. You had quite a career, and you're still doing a lot of things for us, Cliff, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much. We have unfinished business from the last meeting. We have an ordinance to create a business service market manager position in the Career Center. So give the first reading. Okay. So I need a motion to refer it to a public hearing on August 10th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Chow. We had subcommittee reports, Transportation Subcommittee, June 29th. Who was that? No. You want to report out on that? Who's that one? Transportation?
I think we had that report already, they're just...
Transportation, June 29th, or just report of the...
Yeah, we reported out. It was just an update on certain projects, so we did that at the last meeting. Pardon me, similar to...
Do we do the zoning also, then?
Same with the zoning. I mean, I can report again, but I don't think we need to hear the same thing again.
Okay. Yeah. So we're all set. So we just... So we can do the transportation, the zoning subcommittee, and accept them as a report of progress.
Election laws redistricting.
Right, we're going to do that. So motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater for a report of progress. Now we have the election laws redistricting subcommittee report.
I think everybody's pretty aware of the situation that we're going through right now with the elections and so forth, so it's an ongoing process, and hopefully it'll come to a conclusion in the very near future. Thank you.
Okay. So just a motion to accept as a report of progress by Counselor Rook, seconded by Counselor Samaras. All right. We just want a motion to take one other thing out of order for the Human Resource Assessment Report. So motion by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Chow to take up the report. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. We have, as the council may recall, the city did engage in a company to do an assessment in a number of areas, our human resources, and also with the idea and goal to address diversity, equity, and inclusion issues here in the city, both in our workforce, in our efforts going forward, as well as assessing current workforce and department heads and so forth. There was a pretty comprehensive report included in your packets for this week. There are very specific reporting facts, as well as recommendations in terms of what the consultants have suggested that we implement going forward to address some of these very, very important issues when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have here tonight the consultants on Zoom, Clifton Larson, to give a brief overall presentation to the council and to those at home, so that you can have a better understanding as to this process. It's been many months in the making. They've been hard at work on this, and I think, you know, sharing their findings as well as recommendations at this point, and with some action items moving forward. I do want to specifically recognize and thank the Greater Lowell Community Foundation and their funders who have contributed. You may recall, several months ago, when this came up, you know, the initial attempt at trying to solicit bids for the project was beyond our budget capabilities, and I do want to commend our private sector partners who came forward and made donations, and Jay Linehan was here making a presentation to the city and to the council. So I just want to give them specific thanks for making this possible and helping the city address this issue as we march forward. So if there's no objection, I would ask our consultants, Clifton Larson on... Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were on Zoom. Sorry. Well, Frank is here, so... Well, thank you for being here. So I would ask if they could come forward and make their presentation, and then any questions or comments that the council may have. And let me say, you do look different in person than on Zoom, so...
I hope that's a good thing, right? Thank you, Mayor Leahy, city council members, city manager Donahue, and all of those who have joined us here tonight. I'm Frank Levek with Clifton Larson Allen. I'm a human resources consultant. With me tonight, I have my colleagues Gregory Chambers and Jessica Smith. And on behalf of them, I just want to say that, you know, it was really an honor and a privilege to be working on this project for the city. We know how important it was for the city and the community, and in the time that we have tonight, we hope that we're able to share with you really the key findings and key recommendations, with the understanding that there is a pretty lengthy report that you have a copy of. And we will try and cover as much as we can tonight, with the understanding that we also want to try and address any questions that might be along the way. Very quickly, our recommendations are not to be construed as legal advice. I certainly won't read this verbatim, but we want to walk through just a few areas that include why we're doing this, the methodologies that we used in our assessment, what our observations, or key observations and findings were, and then just a general summary of, you know, what our findings were, and also sort of next steps, and then again, allowing for some Q and A. So the city engaged CLA to conduct an assessment of the city's HR practices and the HR function with a particular emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion, or as we call it DEI, and the efforts and support systems that are in place currently, and importantly, also noting that this has not included Lowell Public Schools, because an HR audit had already been completed for the Lowell Public Schools, I believe in 2018. And what we really wanted to do was take a holistic look at the city's workforce culture and get the perceptions and attitudes relative to DEI, the DEI efforts of the city, and of course, develop recommendations for both the HR function and DEI, with the understanding that there is a fair amount of overlap between the two. Our methodologies and our approach included an anonymous online survey that was made available to nearly 900 of the city's ordinance and non-ordinance employees, one-on-one interviews with nearly 30 department heads, managers, and HR, an anonymous online community applicant survey, and of course, a review of all the HR tools, forms, policies, processes, and other historical data that we were able to be provided with. And so with that, I will turn over the next section, our observations and findings, to Gregory.
Thank you, and good evening. So as Frank mentioned, our first effort was to enlist a survey of the city's 900 municipal employees, and we felt it imperative to ask them about their experiences, their perceptions, and understandings of the city's commitment to a diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture. We were hoping for about 40% to 50% as the response rate, but we weren't dissatisfied with the 36% that we received. And in our survey, we received 221 open-ended responses, an average of 45 open-ended responses per question. We did exclude some survey responses based on either inaccuracy, or in some cases, we observed that people were likely rushing through the survey or not answering authentically. Most of the questions were positive, and one of them was negative, and so if they scored 100 on everything, including the negative question, we excluded that, and vice versa. Overall, thematically, we noticed that the highest scores were in relation to feelings of respect around different religions, English as a second or third language, and treatment of immigrants. The lower scores were around career development, feeling respected in the workplace and included, and concerns around the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. On average, women scored six points lower than men, and people of color scored nine points lower than white people. People felt that their supervisors were respectful and supportive, but that there were concerns with favoritism, being compensated fairly based on performance, the city council and the city manager's office perhaps not being aligned, as well as some inconsistent commitment to DEI training. And with that, I'll hand things over to my colleague Jessica.
So I'm going to speak for a moment about a portion of our process, which was one-to-one interviews with most of, nearly all, the department managers and heads. So we sought to learn from them in one-to-one interviews, as I said. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's rare that my voice needs amplification. So we conducted these interviews, members of this team as well as others, one-on-one. We met with 26 of the leaders. We had 46 total questions for each of them. Those interviews took, on average, about an hour and 20 minutes. They were certainly substantive conversations. We sought to gain an understanding of these department's heads' feelings about diversity, equity, and inclusion, their understanding about those ideas, their understanding of the city's previous commitment, and also what their own role would be, as well as some additional thoughts and open-ended feedback. We did find that these leaders were engaged, they were talkative, they spent a good amount of time with us, they shared some mixed responses on their understanding of what diversity, equity, and inclusion was, and interestingly, 35% of them said no in their acknowledgement of previous DEI efforts by the city, though we understood that there had been some. And about 60% said they didn't think in the recruiting process that DEI was emphasized. We'll touch on that later. About 70% only had not had, excuse me, 70% had not had previous interview skills training, which is really an important part of supporting DEI in recruitment. These managers shared generally some frustration about the city's sustained commitment to DEI, noted that due to changes in leadership, city council priorities, that that had shifted over time as well, though they did acknowledge some improvement. There had been a DEI working group, and some noted it had not been as active as they had hoped. And lastly, about these interviews, many of the department heads most felt that the primary responsibility for sustaining diversity, equity, and inclusion lay with HR and with the city manager and her office, but also that HR is understaffed, doing what it can, and that a recommendation from many we spoke to and our own that's explicit in the report is that the city should hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion chief leader. We do want to point out that there had been mention of some notable efforts by the police department, by the elections department, to really broaden its representation of the community in hiring efforts more recently, and there'd been some key leadership hires as well, and the building inspector and DPW office. And with that, I'll turn to you.
And so lastly, we also conducted an online anonymous survey for the community, particularly targeting applicants to the city's job postings. The focus was on the experience with the process.
These managers shared generally some frustration about the city's sustained commitment to DEI, noted that due to changes in leadership, city council priorities, that that had shifted over time as well, though they did acknowledge some improvement. There had been a DEI working group, and some noted it had not been as active as they had hoped. And lastly, about these interviews, many of the department heads most felt that the primary responsibility for sustaining diversity, equity, and inclusion lay with HR and with the city manager and her office, but also that HR is understaffed, doing what it can, and that a recommendation from many we spoke to and our own that's explicit in the report is that the city should hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion chief leader. We do want to point out that there had been mention of some notable efforts by the police department, by the elections department to really broaden its representation of the community in hiring efforts more recently. And there'd been some key leadership hires as well, and the building inspector and DPW office. And with that, I'll turn to you.
And so lastly, we also conducted an online anonymous survey for the community, particularly targeting applicants to the city's job postings. The focus was on the experience with the process. We also provided the opportunity for additional thoughts and open-ended feedback. This was posted to the city's website as well as social media, community organizations, and other local outlets. We had a 54, we had 54 responses. The overall rating score was very low. It was 37, so it indicated that there is not a great deal of confidence in the process. Some of the themes in feedback we heard, never receiving an acknowledgement of a resume being received, or the reason for not being hired, a perception of favoritism, it's who you know that gets you hired, that the process takes too long, including from even when you are hired, the date of acceptance until you start, and that the process itself is too cumbersome, it's over-reliant on paper and manual processes, which the HR department, you know, readily admitted, and all of the department heads and managers also indicated was a source of frustration. There were a number of different notable pieces of feedback, certainly we couldn't include all of them, but we wanted to include just a few that we thought were noteworthy. I revoked my candidacy due to the high number of requested interviews and later found racist incidents from that organization. Certainly, it's an online anonymous survey, there's really not a lot we can do beyond, you know, having that comment sort of stand on its own, but it is, we believe, a comment that, you know, we would have been remiss by leaving out. I was told the role was given to someone, the hiring manager, as known for over a decade. I was their second choice candidate, and the first candidate did not work out. And then on the more positive end, communication was good from HR, they were very prepared, they were clear on the process, and the HR director and staff were very professional. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jessica to talk about the HR function assessment.
So a typical part of the process that we do is reviewing the HR function and how it operates. We met with, one-on-one with various members of the HR department. We looked at all of the tools, the processes, data that had been gathered over time. And our goal was to do a general evaluation of HR with a particular focus on the sustainability and process of the city's DEI efforts. We do want to note again that it's a department of four, that staffing ratio of HR to the city's population, I should say the department population, is low. As we noted, the staffing is a bit low. And also, this department is supporting the public schools benefits administration as well. The focus of HR, as we understood it in our assessment, is quite transactional, administrative, and more focused on compliance rather than larger themes or initiatives. As Frank noted, similar to in the recruiting process, many of the HR processes are paper-based and cumbersome, difficult to make efficient. As far as recruiting goes, many different websites are used for posting to support reaching a broader community for DEI, and there's also broad internal posting as well. But the list of good websites and resources to use for DEI posting was not used very consistently. I will move forward and say that another observation we had was lack of applicant tracking and sourcing data, which made it difficult to look at process over time. There is available technology to improve these processes in place, it's being paid for, but it's not being utilized at the moment. And lastly, while there have been good training offerings, and that's increased recently, the attendance has been a bit low. And indeed, for trainings that we did on diversity, equity, and inclusion, not all department heads or managers attended. There are additional existing training resources that the city has, such as LinkedIn Learning, being paid for but not being effectively utilized. Last observation, we found that the compensation system in its practice is a bit outdated, and it's lacking, as can be, connection with performance as well.
Thank you, Jessica. Overall, our report contains 19 recommendations, many of which are focused exclusively on DEI, some of which are more focused on HR, but there's a lot of overlap between the two. Seven of them we categorized as high priority based on both our feeling of there being very pressing as well as most impactful if you execute them. The key recommendations that we're presenting this evening are meant to capture both those high priority items as well as a few other recommendations of note. And again, this complete list of recommendations is in the report which we delivered to the city. And one more note, we would like to underscore that there is no one magic solution to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that success requires a collective effort in order to truly be effective. And so foremost, we recommend that the city proceed and hire a chief diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. We note that that has been budgeted for, but the compensation level is not as high as we think that it should be, noting that this is a leadership role, and we also believe that this should, this position should be located in the city manager's office rather than in HR. We also think that the city should rebrand its messaging around diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as the benefits of a career with the city, looking at your website, your job postings, as well as community outreach and recruitment efforts. And finally, we wanted to mention specifically around DEI, rebooting the working group as a DEI leadership council, which is employee-driven but led by the chief DEI officer. We think that one of their roles should be surveying both the residents as well as the workforce and then acting on, executing action plans. And with that, I'll turn things over to Jessica.
Okay. And lastly, in this area, we really do recommend that the city leverage the existing technology that's available for applicant tracking, hiring, and onboarding. Employee experience is really important, and that training as well be boosted and use the available technology. And finally, that standardized hiring evaluation criteria be developed and implemented and sustained, and that it should be tracked as well in its responses.
So finally, we just wanted to emphasize that incorporating diversity, equity, and inclusion advances the culture of your organization, culture being a key component that can help or hinder your ability to hire, retain, as well as develop employees. Furthermore, we believe that that culture informs your brand and your reputation, which are critical components of your ability to lead a culture of DEI. So the question becomes, what story is the city telling with its culture, its purpose, and its commitment to DEI? And what does that story convey? What messages are your actions sending to potential applicants, employees, and community members? And so we recommend that the city's next step is to develop a cohesive and universal strategy that can implement sustainable change to advance a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And with that, thank you, and I will turn things over to Jessica to lead our Q and A.
So with our time remaining, we welcome what questions you might have that we are able to answer at the moment. Questions, observations, or feedback.
Thank you. Any questions from the councils at this time? Counselor, drink water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and for the report. I found it truly comprehensive and, you know, to be a very useful roadmap to make important changes around diversity, equity, and inclusion if we do the work to implement these recommendations. There's a lot of detail in here and a lot of recommendations. One thing stood out to me in reading it, and I'm wondering if it might be possible to elaborate, but one, one highlight of the report I found to be some of the efforts actually being made by the police department and the chief of police around specific outreach to make sure that their, you know, information on the civil services exam and other things are getting out into the community. And there are a couple pages at the back of the report on workforce demographics. And, you know, while I think they tell us what we mainly know is that, you know, there's a very stubborn problem that we have is of the workforce demographics not necessarily reflecting the workforce of the city. But there was some really good progress made in terms of the hiring over the last 18 and 36 months in the police department, in terms of new hires being much more predominantly constituted of people of color compared to the overall demographics of the police department. I don't know if it's possible to elaborate it on here tonight or maybe a possible subject, you know, for a future subcommittee meeting, but is there any insight or a way to elaborate on the specific efforts being made by the police department that appear to be working?
Thank you for bringing that up. I would, I would tell you that particularly when it comes to the exams and, and taking some of the criteria that is typically required on those exams and sort of flexing on them, and also reaching out more proactively, that the superintendent and the LPD have been able to, as you can see from the data, sort of move that needle. Our report does contain, you know, more specifics around that, but it truly, along with the elections department, the Career Center as well, there are, you know, certainly success stories and, you know, very positive and encouraging signs of, you know, what we would call sort of more sporadic success stories rather than a cohesive, uniform sort of strategy around it, but.
Thank you. And I did just want to highlight it because it is a distinct success story that does seem to stick out to me as you read the report. Just to highlight, over the past 18 months, roughly 37% of the hires in the police department have been Black, Asian, or Hispanic. And if you look at the overall demographics of policing or police departments nationwide, which are in here, I believe it's, police departments nationwide are roughly 85% white. So that's a significant improvement in particularly over the past two to three years. So of all the things in here, that stuck out to me, and potentially, you know, some best practices that could be followed, but just wanted to highlight the good work happening in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation as well. I just have a quick question, a quick question, because in any data gathering, this is a study, I think the response, who responds and the response rates are very important, and we have a 36% response rate, and you said you're hoping for 40 to 50%. When you say you're hoping 40 to 50%, does that mean the, is that the standard that other towns and cities that you did the study for have responded to? So how are we compared to other towns and cities, number one? And the second question to follow up to that is, you have a 36% response rate. If, and we see the type of report and the data and statistics that we have, if the response rates were higher, would the information have changed? Or would you say that the people who respond are somewhat representative of the entire 900 municipal employees in the city? And lastly, if you can remember all these questions, all these three questions, why then the other people did not respond? Is there a reason why did not respond in your experience with other towns and city? There has to be some indication as to, you know, what motivated people to respond and what motivated people not to respond. Thank you.
So I will let Gregory comment on the comparison to other similar entities, but I would quickly say two things. Number one, this is a first run, and so building an expectation that this type of work be done and that the insight and the feedback be received and be used and be reported on is a skill to be practiced. Similarly, with recruiting, for the PD, for all other departments, that using a system and having that be a core element of practice and repeated is a way of maintaining that communication channel and connection. Gregory, do you have additional?
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you for the question. Firstly, we recognize that this is a sensitive topic, and so not everyone might have felt comfortable responding. That might explain the lower response rate, but also to, as Jessica mentioned, we do believe that if this were to come out of the DEI working group or the DEI leadership council, that there would be a greater response rate to these questions. We think that some of it may have been due to our being an outside organization asking these questions. And I think you might have had one other question that we didn't cover. Would you mind repeating that? So the simple answer to that is we don't know. We don't know what people did not want to share regarding this. And also, yeah, the data that we received is the data we have to work with, but there were quite a bit of opinions represented in the responses. Thank you.
All set. Counselor Noon, then Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to join Madam Managers, and I'm sure all the council too would agree that, you know, with thanks to Jay Linehan from the Greater Lowell Foundation for the money to do this assessment. This is a very in-depth assessment, it's a five-month-long assessment. The finding, some of which is not surprise, but, you know, we do have a lot of work to do on this. This is a great, clearly very comprehensive. We appreciate your work. I think, you know, after some comment by the council, I would file a motion to send this to the personnel subcommittee and to die this out, really, this more in-depth on this and how we're going to implement it. But also, I want to say this, that, you know, this work, really, the managers and her team, when you spoke of the diversity officers, the managers already put in the budget for this upcoming years to hire a diversity officers to really go about implementing this report. And I like the suggestion you make as well, that these diversity officers, you know, ought to be in the manager's office rather than at the HR office, but that to be discussed at a later time when we, the subcommittee, personnel subcommittee, and all the council will go in-depth in how we're going to implement this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
I concur with my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, I think in your communication, you laid it out pretty good where this is a valuable, it's a valuable roadmap that we have here. Reading the second, seven recommendations, we've already taken action on, on some of them, and some of them are easily implementable. You can implement them easy enough, such as the LinkedIn Learning that we already purchased just needs to be rolled out. Certainly, we are going to embark on hiring a diversity officer. I like the suggesting part, suggesting of partnering with Circle Works to do recruiting, and certainly using MUNIS as a tracking mechanism. I think those are important components in the top seven recommendations. There were some, as was mentioned, we have some work to do. However, if you look at some of the higher scores, there's some positives as well, which we can't lose sight of. Again, it's a lot of information. I'll support the recommendation to go to personnel because it warrants a longer discussion. And so it's good to have this information, there's some good things, there are some areas we, we have to work on with these recommendations, but I think we recognize we have some work to do and we're committed to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, if you could just refresh my memory as to what price do you have in the line item for the person to be hired, the diversity officer?
Thank you, Counselor. It's budgeted currently at $75,000 a year. The recommendation, however, that's even below the low end. The recommendation is $79,000 to $120,000 range. So we've taken the recommendation, I've spoken with finance. I think it's a great idea to send this report because there is so much in it to personnel that we can. that we can discuss, and, but certainly, the hiring of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer is, it appears to be our number-one priority. There are other things we can do simultaneously, and we will, but I think that's critical, that we get someone on board. So we'll continue to look at the financial aspect before the posting. I know Clifton Larson was good enough to share some job description postings for us to consider in terms of moving forward. I do want to say, you know, this is new to many of our department heads. I mean, we've been throwing a lot of training at them over the past two years, and, you know, there's been a difference of participation, but we are, again, trying to stress that this is important, this is a priority, and I think some of the things that came through with this, which is things that we knew, but we need to look at our HR Department, because it's not realistic to expect them to do recruitment and training and skills, you know, interview skill sets. There's just not enough people. It doesn't mean it's not important. It just means we need to look at the overall structure of how our HR Department is structured and what we're asking them to do, and it really speaks to the values and priority of the city and how we're going to staff that in a move forward. So I think that's important. I think one of the points that I did want to make, and that had to do with, you know, advancement in the Police Department. You know, for the past couple of years, the Chief has held sessions for youth in the city to talk to them about taking the Civil Service exam. We can't hire someone if they haven't taken the exam and made their way through that whole process. And what, you know, was pointed out early on, when the Chief was first appointed, a lot of the kids from the City of Lowell, for a number of reasons, I mean, they don't even show up on the Civil Service test results. And part of it is you have to study, and part of it is there's a fee for taking the exam, and there's technical aspects that they may not be familiar with. What we did find out of those efforts, not only was the Police Department going to help them study and understand what the exam presented, but would pay for the exam for them. And that made a big difference. The number of area youth taking the exam went way up. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but way up. And we saw those, that's how the hires, they made their way to the Civil Service hiring list. So it's that kind of proactive outreach that we saw results, tangible results, in a pretty short period of time. So again, I want to commend the Police Department for doing those kinds of things. And so I think using the tools and the guidance that we've, you know, gotten from this report and recommendations and moving forward, I think there's a lot that can be done. There's, I agree, there's a lot to do. We knew that going into this, though. But at the same time, there's a lot that I think we can do. So we'll look at that salary. That's a long way around the block of saying the salary, you know, that first step of hiring a DE&amp;I officer. We will take a very close look at the salary and come back to the council.
Thank you.
Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank, I want to thank your group for putting this report together. Very inclusive. It's, it gives us a lot to ponder, and as Councilor Elliott just mentioned, it's a great roadmap. There's much to digest here. And I think that by vetting this report out in subcommittees in the very near future, I think that, I think it'll be, it'll certainly help us with a plan going forward, because I do believe that this community, this council, City Manager and the team, we certainly want to do the right thing and to make things better, and a report like this can help us attain those goals. So again, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
So do we want to send it to Subcommittee right now at this time? We just reported, okay, so a motion by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Chow, to send Personnel Subcommittee for further discussion at a later date? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Back to the agenda. Take a motion to bundle 303 through 39.
Sure, moved.
By Councilor Rourke, seconded by Councilor Samaras. So a motion to accept, 303 to 39, to accept and, accept and act upon. So a motion by Councilor Rourke, seconded by Councilor Samaras. 310, the last from the meetings, 310, motion by myself, request City Manager, Proper Department, look at the health of a tree located at Ninety-One Felton Street. That's on the agenda tonight, so seconded by Councilor Chow. That's on the agenda, it speaks for itself. 311, motion by myself, request City Manager, work with Proper Department to paint turning signals on Andover Street, seconded by, anybody? Councilor Elliott? That basically speaks for itself, Madam Manager. I was just looking for calming measures. If I thought, if we have the turning signals, at least most people realize that it's not a travel lane, it's a turning lane. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion was by myself, request City Manager and Proper Department, work with residents on the Hamilton Canal, redistricting construction schedule over the next few years, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. That one, Madam Manager, just again, just looking for a way to work with the residents. We've got a long road there, a lot of buildings going up, and we should make every effort to reach out to the residents in that section and try to come up with a plan that everyone can live with, so appreciate that. Thank you. Section four, Communications, City Manager, motion responses, motion response A, PLE program. Any questions? Was that Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm through to the City Manager. You know, it's an exciting program, I think, for Lowell Police to get involved, once again, with the youth of our city, and also with the options that are being offered to them. I would ask is that when it's up and running, will it be a year-long program with its offerings, you know, sports, whether indoor, outdoor, throughout the year?
That's my understanding, Councilor. I think Deputy LeBlanc may be on Zoom tonight. They have posted, so it started with the boxing program, which is being established. My understanding is they have also posted for, I believe, swimming with the Y, and this is a work in progress, but I do understand it's supposed to be a year-long effort by the police. And there seems to be a lot of interest in the Police Department to participate. Is Deputy LeBlanc on?
He is.
Okay. Could we let him in? He may be able to speak.
He's in.
He's in? Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the time. So, yeah, we're really excited here at the Police Department to be launching the Police Youth Athletic Services Program. It's going to start with boxing later this summer. We're collaborating with the West End Gym on that to start the program. We've got a history of working with them. In fact, a couple of our police officers who are volunteering for that program came up through the West End Gym through a different Lowell Police program some years ago. But in terms of the other sports, we're looking at swimming, probably at the Y. We're going to do wrestling, basketball, and we've really already gotten a lot of feedback and some emails from parents wanting to sign their children up. The email address is pal@loalma.gov, P-A-L@loalma.gov. It's something that, like I said, we're really excited about. It's going to be a year-long, different sports. And then also, we're looking to have a tutoring part to the program as well, which we're going to look to see if we might be able to collaborate with Middlesex Community College and the University of Massachusetts at Lowell to also help the students studying with some tutoring. So it's, we're really excited about it. A lot of good feedback already, and, you know, tremendous show of support in terms of our officers wanting to volunteer. We had a meeting about a month or so ago, and there was probably at least fifteen to twenty officers, and that was just for the boxing program. So early stages of the program, but we're very, very optimistic about it.
Great, thank you. And, you know, I know with the Boys and Girls Club going under renovations and, you know, and the Police Department moving out of there, I know that Officer Rudy was a big part of the Boys and Girls Club program, and I know he's been behind this initiative for a number of years now, so very happy to see it going forward. And with the number of sports being offered free of charge to the youth of our city, I think is very important and commendable. So, you know, other than offering my services as the coach, how good or bad they may be, you know, I'd love to take part in it, and I think it's really positive step forward for the Police Department of the city and for the youth. So thank you very much to the Police Department for stepping up, and Madam Manager to the administration for giving them what they need. Thank you.
And we'll keep you posted as these programs come online, so the council and, of course, the community knows where they can sign up and what's being offered.
Thank you. Any other questions? Response B, speed monitoring. Councilor Samaras, any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, thank you for the report. What I found interesting in the report, it talked about that this, basically, the speed radar sign that's been set up at Aiken Avenue will be only for a period of two months, and it'll be changed every two weeks because drivers become desensitized to the signs, and I can understand that. But is there any possibility down the road, there are signs now that not only do they have the speed limit, but they'll say, you're exceeding the speed limit, it might be a blue light, almost like there's a cruiser, you know, in the area, or we'll say, thank you for driving appropriately. I mean, I know those cost more, but the thing is, I think they attract the attention a little more to the public utilizing the roads. Is that because of money? Is that our issue at this point?
It's not. My understanding, based on conversations with the police, is that it's not money, it's that people do become desensitized, and they find it more effective to have these signs put out at different times, different areas. I think they already have some out on Aiken, I believe, and again...
They have one up now, yeah.
And they're going to be moving that around. So I think if we can, maybe if Deputy LeBlanc wants to speak to that as well, because...
In other words, what I'm looking at, can we buy the signs that have the expanded role? And, you know, in other words, they can actually state exceeding the speed limit, or please slow down, you know, that type of thing? If that's possible, I mean, I knew...
Yeah, we can look into it. Again, I know we do have speed signs. Deputy LeBlanc could address that.
Yeah, so currently, we have two of the pole-mounted signs, and then we have one trailer sign. The pole-mounted sign, one of them, is up on Aiken Ave now as you enter the city from Draken. Kind of jumping ahead to the next motion response, the trailer unit is currently on Beacon Street. The signs that the Councilor is talking about, definitely something we could look into. I know I've seen ones where if you exceed the speed limit, either a blue light or a strobe light flashes in the middle of the sign. And then we also have a message board, and we're currently working on the motion from Councilor, from the council regarding a broad traffic plan in terms of, you know, covering all different types of facets. And one of the things we're looking at is a combination of the message boards and the speed signs, and then obviously, as well as the enforcement and things like that. But definitely something we can look into is speed signs that are similar to what Councilor Samaras is talking about in terms of either with a strobe light or starts blinking if you're exceeding the speed limit.
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm thinking, I'm looking at, and I've found them in other communities. They've stated that they're pretty effective, so thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Questions? Motion response C, safety measures at Aberdeen, Beacon, Christian Streets. Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The response was that a pole-mounted radar speed sign will be installed one week at a time on each of the listed streets for two weeks each over the course of the next three to four months. That is good. I'm glad they're going to do something to see what measures, if this is effective, so that's a good start. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. With all these efforts, the idea is to evaluate, to have enforcement to evaluate, and then to see what needs to be continued or whether it needs to be changed. So we will continue to keep these on, I don't want to say our radar, but our radar.
Thank you.
Radar, good play on words.
If you don't mind, just from the chair, I'm going to, Madam Manager, I'm just going to keep advocating for my speed humps. I think that it's going to be the way of the future to...
Right.
Put those in the streets, so...
I know. I'm looking, you know, Council, Mr. Mayor, this very well may be something that we pilot, even with the temporary ones that have been used in other communities, just to get started on seeing what the reaction is and how effective, so we hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Motion response D, four-way stop at Lincoln, Washington, and Ange, is that Councilor Mercier?
Yes, thank you very much. Now, we all know that there's an ordinance prohibiting parking within twenty feet from an intersection. We know that, but there is a suggestion with this response that we therefore amend the ordinance that needs to be drafted to prohibit parking further than twenty feet. So I would like to make the motion that we create that ordinance for a sixty-day trial to see if we could prohibit it further than twenty feet, because this is a very particular area where twenty feet doesn't cut it. You have to go back a little bit further, so I would be grateful for that. Thank you.
We'll do that. We'll try and have that ready for the next, we'll definitely have that ready for the next council meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on this response? Motion response E, Pan Am Bridge Maintenance. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you for sending the communication. Folks in the South Lowell Neighborhood Organization appreciate it, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam, sure.
I'm not a psychic, but we have a better shot at seeing God than have Pan Am come and do what we're asking them to do. But that's a good motion, but it'll never happen in a zillion years. I'm sorry to say, but I'm beyond honest. They're not good tenant landlords or whatever the heck. I'm sorry, but that's true. Sorry, Councilor.
I don't agree, but if you...
Is there anything we can do, Madam Manager?
If you don't ask...
You don't ask, but you can ask, so you're blue in the face, and you ain't going to get it.
Can we act on it for safety reasons?
We did reach out. We'll also follow up to try and get a meeting. As we've talked about many times in the council chamber, they're exempt from local ordinance, local rules, state rules. They are protected under federal law. I think our city clerk can tell us that, if that's correct. But we will try. I think in terms of the public safety aspect, one of the things that we are most concerned about is not just the aesthetic appearance, but that there have been vehicles crashing into that bridge. Now, we saw what happened this week or last week on Route Ninety-three, and what a, you know, big, big problem that is. So, you know, signage was one of the things of the motion, so we're also looking at that as well, because that's definitely a public safety issue.
I can tell you, Madam Manager, being familiar with the organization, that there is a possibility that it may be sold in a short manner.
So we can only hope for brighter days.
Thank you. Motion response F, parking policies and school readiness. We have a registered speaker?
Yes, we do. Debra White.
Hello. Thank you.
Just state your name and your address for the record.
Oh, Debbie White.
Thank you.
What else do you need?
Just your name and address for the record.
Okay. Debbie White, at One Thirty John Street in downtown. And I wanted to thank Councilman Chow for being so responsive and for representing my concerns so well when I couldn't be here a week or so ago, I think it was. Thank you. But I did see the response from Director Ryan, and I've spoken to Director Ryan as well, but I'm assuming last time you were informed of... John Street, the Joseph Downs garage, and just in casual conversation, I met three other people where I live who were also either threatened to be towed or towed. And that made me, that got me thinking, what is going on there? But in any case, what happened in all the instances was that they were, we were told that our cars were dirty, and that was true, and they are dirty because the parking garage is dirty. There's a lot of pollen in the air. The cars get dirty. And we were also, I was informed of a 72-hour rule that, this is what I was told, that I had to not move my car around every 72 hours in the garage, but I had to actually leave the garage and then re-enter it every 72 hours. In my case, there was on record that my car had been moved for half an hour on June 11th. It was a Friday. It had been moved. And on June 12th, I got slapped with a parking violation from the police department. And I had also gotten towed. The parking department did not have my current contact information because that voicemail, it doesn't matter. They didn't have my current contact information. But I assume they did because they send me an invoice every single month. I've been using that garage for seven years. The people, some of them are here, have used the garage for six years in one case, five years in the other, and three years. And we all were called, well, I didn't receive the call, but accused of having dirty cars. But that wasn't the end of it, and this is what concerns me. I was accused of sharing my pass with somebody else, even though my car had been moved on a Friday. On a Saturday, it was slapped with a violation. The police had put that on. The parking department had requested that. And when I questioned that, I said, "But I just do," and they had a record that my car had been in and out of the garage the day before. They said they looked at my windshield wiper. My car was parked in the same place two days in a row, you know. They looked at my windshield wiper, and it didn't look as though there was any activity that I had been out the day before, instead of actually checking the cameras to see if my car had moved, which it had. And when I said, "You have evidence," that I did, they said, "No, the evidence that your car moved is only evidence that your pass was used." So, anyway, they did eventually look at the cameras and see that my car had been used. It wasn't abandoned. So, there's this thing going on where dirty cars are tagged somehow. We are notified that the cars are dirty, and then we're supposedly given 72 hours to move them? I think that's how it works. I don't use my car much, and some of my friends don't either, who were tagged. Anyway, I had no idea my car was towed. And when I went to the car, the garage, to use it, and these people did as well, to use their cars, our cars were towed. In two cases, the people who had gotten some notification by phone that their cars were dirty, they were also accused of having two cars in the garage and using one pass for both of them. That is not true in either case. I was accused of passing my pass on to somebody else. That was not the case. And these two people were accused of not having a license plate registered with the garage, which was not true either. They couldn't have gotten the pass in the first place unless they had been registered. So, one of my concerns is, what's going on here? Why are the people who have been tagged with dirty cars also being accused of some nefarious activity that we have not committed? And I also want to address the fact that, it says here that there is no 72, the response by Director Ryan, sorry, I meant this, not this, says here, "It has never been a policy of the city to allow storage of cars," that I understand, "within the garage, or to require customers to move their cars every 72 hours." Well, they showed me a document that was in the parking garage in the office. They said, "When you sign this, you sign this," that you had to move your car every 72 hours. I had never seen that. It was apparently on the form that I had signed seven years ago. But there is a policy, and I was told by Laz Parking, not only that there was a policy, but everybody knew about the policy. So, I started asking people whether they knew about the policy, including you, Melehe, and none of us had heard about the policy. But now the policy was being enforced after seven years. And also, if the policy is that we have to move our cars in and out every 72 hours, and using your pass doesn't indicate that your car went out, only that the pass has been used, then using the pass is no verification that we've moved my car, our cars, out of the garage. I don't know if you understand. That is just illogical. It doesn't make any sense. So, I'm here just to ask about the 72-hour rule, to please stop, you know, calling people when their cars are dirty, when the car, the garage itself is what makes them dirty. And I don't want to have to visit my car every 72 hours and move it or clean it or something like that. If you want the cars cleaned there, get a hose. Instead of, you know, inspecting the windshield wipers, I would recommend that you keep them clean. But I personally don't care if my car is clean. It's spick and span now, because the minute I got it out of the towing facility, I went straight to a washing, a car washing station. But in any case, I have details here. I don't have to go into them unless you want to hear them of the other people too, who either got towed or threatened to get towed. But, so I would like to ask about the 72-hour rule. I want to know why we have to keep our cars clean and why this is suddenly a problem. And also, we're also now told that if we leave for any length of time, we're supposed to inform the garage of that.
Okay, well-
They're not my mother. Like, I don't understand that requirement. If we're still paying, we haven't abandoned our cars. We're still paying customers, but during the pandemic especially, and so on. Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you for-
Thank you.
Coming out, sharing your concerns. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you to the registered speaker for bringing this to our attention, not only to the specific scenario, but just the overall parking policy for the garages in the downtown area. As I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the health of the downtown environment for the residents and businesses, parking is an important factor. The residents and the business owners in downtown don't have the luxury of having parking spaces off-street or the driveway or the garage. So, having a proper parking spaces and the safety in the garage, and the confidence and the trust in the parking garage system is very important to the residents in downtown. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, I want to thank Madam Manager and the Parking Director, Taylor Ryan, for this report. I see that the Parking Director and the Parking Garage Personnel General is responsible for six huge garages in this area, 7,000 vehicles total. So, that's a daunting responsibility as well. And I understand that, you know, there are rules and procedures and steps and process that you have to go through to deal with different customers, different vehicles. And I'd like you to address these policies to the registered speaker and to the public at home as well. And much of the things that I would like to hear you mention in your report, and the registered speaker also ask is about the 72-hour policy, and also define what dirty cars mean. You know, dirty cars from dust or from muds. Maybe the resident went on an excavation weekend, have muds that go into the woods, the forest. You know, what does that mean to, I guess, to the cleanliness of the garage? And also, you could mention about the pass card. Is that connected to a specific vehicle, or is it to a customer? And can one customer, if they buy two pass cards, they can have two any vehicles, or it's supposed to be a specific registered vehicle to each pass card? And also, the communication that, you know, in case of a violation to a vehicle or to the owner of the vehicle, what kind of communication do you take before taking actions? If, through you, Madam Manager, to the Parking Director, Taylor Ryan, if you could speak on these issues.
We just want to get a report, though. I mean, there's a lot of questions here, so-
Sure, it's all these things I mentioned in the report.
Touch briefly, and then I'll get back.
Yeah, I kind of summarized it, so that way it would get to the point in an easy manner.
Sure.
To the city manager, to the council. Debbie's right. We made a mistake. We towed 12 cars, and we made a mistake on two that we rectified. We worked with Debbie, and mistakes were made. The towing of a car is not a week-long process. It takes a few weeks. We identify cars by walking through the garages. We reach out using the contact information we have, and if we don't hear, we try again. What I've asked Laz to do is start sending out certified letters as an additional step that we can take to the owner of record of that car, so that we can find out what their intention is. The reason we want to look at these cars is because if they're in the garage for a long time, they're dirty, they attract attention. You know, they can cause crime in the garage. Somebody would see a car that's been sitting there for quite some time and want to move in, steal it, do something, take something from it, because they know nobody's watching it. So, that is our intention, to try to keep the garages safe and clean. They do get dirty. This is a multi-week process that we reach out, we call. If we have email, we email. If we don't, if we find that it's a transient parker, we try to go through the RMV and look up the license plates to get in touch with people. We try to follow a process, and we try to do our best to reach out to people. In this case, Debbie's right. She was in the garage on a Friday, and she took the car out. Well, the Laz people went through the garage time before Friday and said, "There's the car. It's parked there." Well, she took it out, she put it back in the same spot. The Laz people came by and said, "We're gonna call the cops. We're gonna 72-hour it, because it hasn't moved." We didn't, it wasn't recognized as being moved. After Debbie came in, I asked to look, I told her I'd look at the cameras. We looked at the cameras, and she was right. The car was moved. It was just put back in the same spot, so it wasn't noticed. And so, like I said, we identified an issue, and now in the future, I've asked, I've put a better checklist together. I'm gonna have a form that Laz fills out. We're gonna meet, they're gonna meet with me before we tow a car. I'm gonna make sure that we've made all the calls, everything possible. I'm gonna work with Laz to get the emails that she gets from the billing department added to the contact list. But we're also gonna work with all the customers to try to update their contact information. Like Debbie, seven years ago, she came into the garage. Those phone numbers aren't good anymore. So, we will address that, and we'll try to get updated numbers. We're updating the procedures and the processes, and we're gonna try to make improvements. The 72-hour tow is basically a tool that we have after we can't make the calls. We put a call in a 72-hour tow. The police try to get in touch with the owner, and if they can't, then we move to the step of towing. There is no way physically, mathematically, any way at all that we could make every car in every garage move every 72 hours. We know that. I can't do that. What we do is look for dirty cars. And if, we've contacted people who have broken hips, and they've said, "I have a broken hip. I'm not gonna move that car for three months." That's great. We know about it. We've identified it. We know about it. We're not trying to track people. It's all about safety and convenience for the customer, and make the garages as safe as possible for people that are walking in and walking out. So, a dirty car, it's got dust on it, it's leaking fluids, it has a flat tire. We look, we check registrations and stickers on some cars. If a car is not registered, we don't want it in the garage, and we tow it. Okay? And that's allowable. We can do that immediately. We can call the police, because part of the rules, all cars have to be registered. The last thing we want to do is tow a car, and that's, you know, I will do everything that we can to prevent another mistake like that again. So, if there's, let's see. I think that's, any questions?
Yes, yes.
Council Sumerus, yeah?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Ryan. Did this lady get her car towed?
Yes.
And did she have to pay to get it back out?
Yes.
And who, and since you made a mistake, who's-
We took care of it. We've come to an agreement on future parking.
All right.
She has three passes, I believe? Three passes in the garage, yeah. So, we did.
All right.
And same with the other person that we towed by mistake.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
We towed two cars out of the garage. One was stolen out of Pennsylvania, had been in the garage for six months. And we towed another car, and a gentleman showed up at like 10:30 at night looking for it. And when we told him it was towed, he shrugged his shoulder and walked into the night. So, there are cars that are being dumped in the garages, you know, stolen cars hidden. So, we just want to have an active garage, because it's safe.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Chow?
Just one last comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And again, thank you, Director Taylor Ryan, for the report. I think just, you know, that was an excellent report and a good response to solving the situation with the registered speaker. And I think that this is the question of uncertainty about the policy about the garage by different residents. And I'm sure you might have already, I haven't checked, to be honest with you, but I was wondering if maybe you could post the policies on the parking garage website, so that way everyone would be aware of, you know, the expectations of-
Absolutely. I'm gonna-
Customers can do or cannot do. Would that be possible?
We're still updating them. We're making a few more changes. I may run it through law. I have a couple of questions. I might run through the law department. And then we will be making sure that every pass card holder has a copy of the new updated paperwork, and that they're all contacted to update their contact information.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Sumerus?
It probably would be a good suggestion if you put a note to different people, to the, say, people buy a pass, put like a paragraph that says, "If you're gonna be unavailable for a certain period of time, please let us know that," so that you don't just tow somebody's car because they didn't move it.
Absolutely, and that will be part of it. If people would be willing to let us know-
Sure.
We've had a couple of people since this has come up, saying that they're going on a sabbatical. They'll be back in six months. Okay, great. We know the blue Volvo on the second floor is, we know whose that is.
That's right.
So.
Thank you. Council Roark?
Just a couple of comments and a very quick question. You know, I know when Mr. Ryan talks about dirty cars, I see that in the early garage. I mean, they're not just, like, there's inches of dust on them, which, you know, I know that people have complained about those type of cars. So, I imagine that's what, that they're talking about. But the second one is, if someone lives downtown and they work downtown, and you want to take their car out once a week to go shopping or to visit, is, there's something that they could do to let you know that, hey, you know, most of my transportation is walking, and by somewhere have a place for my car if I do need to use it and so forth?
The garage managers are in the garage every day. They know the cars. So, if they see a red Hyundai on the second floor, and it's there for a week, they'll watch it. They'll take an eye, keep an eye on it. But if the next week they come by, it's on the second floor, they walk by it. There's enough familiarity with the people that park in the garages. So, the garage managers know, overall, they have a good idea who's in there and who's not in there.
You know, I will say personally that Bacchus, who works at the early garage, is fantastic, right? Tremendous employee. And the last thing I'll just ask you quickly is, is there any wellness checks? If the police, if you know a car, you have it for three or four weeks, and you know it belongs to, you know, Mr. Smith or Mrs. Jones, and that, is there any time in place where, you know, police would be asked to go to the residence to make sure the person's okay, if you can't contact them through phone or email and so forth?
We have not done that. I, you know, I, you know, want to really feel good about making that call before I made that call.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, the speaker. All set? Council Chow?
Thank you.
Judicial Center Parking, Council Sumerus, yeah?
The next motion, well, it was nice to know that they could have a group rate, but the fact is, they have to get 20 people, and they can't pay individually. They have to pay altogether. That's kind of tough for them to do that. You know, what is one person gonna go around and collect it? I just find that hard to fathom. But anyway, at least she gave me an answer. I don't know what to say. But I left it up to the people at the courthouse to see if they want to, you know, get 20 people together or whatever to save a few bucks a month. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next response was a motion that I put in on 91 Felton Street, just quickly from the chair. Through you to Madam Manager, just- Just, this is something, so they did ask me to go by, I looked at it and Commissioner Clancy's here. They're just concerned about their wall. There's not a lot of movement, but there is some movement. So I don't know what our responsibility is. I mean, the tree is healthy, but it seems to be putting pressure on that wall. So it's just, you know, sooner or later, it's going to buckle worse. So I don't know what our, what we normally do with that. So I don't know, Madam Manager, through you to Commissioner?
I'll defer to, as the report said, we've been out four or five times looking at this particular tree. Commissioner Clancy?
So for this, I mean, we can continue to monitor it and understand how the wall might move. But when we last reviewed it, it seemed like it was, yes, there's some movement. Um, we, when we look at trees, we look for, at the health of the tree. Um, so we first, that's our, first, first what we look at. Uh, as far as how a tree grows into an area, you know, there's, we have, you know, there's, as trees mature, they grow into spaces, sidewalks, uh, walkways on private property, walls. And that's something that we really just don't, we, we can't, I guess, get into seeing how a tree impacts, uh, a fence or a wall or any other, uh, private property. I guess we, for this particular location, we can continue to look at it, um, and, and see, and also continue to check the health of the tree.
Okay, I just, I mean, I can see their point. It's, it's not a sidewalk lifting, it's not the street being lifted, but it's their retaining wall that's being pushed out. So do we monitor that? I mean, it's our tree pushing a wall out that's private property. So is there any, anything that we're legally bound to do, I guess?
Defer, I mean, maybe it's something that'd have to go through law department. I, I guess as a manager, maybe on the...
Yeah, we, if it got to the point, we would refer to the law department. It doesn't look like it's at that point now.
Okay.
You know, it's a matter of law, as far as the tree affecting or destroying a wall, but...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
There's specific law around trees and without getting too far into it, it's, people have a right to cut down branches that are over on their property, albeit coming from the adjoining property. Um, but there's specific case law. But we can ask the law department in, in the future if it looks like an issue, we can ask them to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, motion to suspend the rule, take motion 11.12 and 13 out of order, please.
Second. Okay. Motion by Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Elliott, to take, which ones out again?
11.12 and 11.13, sir.
Mr. Mayor, as, as well as 10.5 National Grid, these are people that'll probably be here all night and I don't think they'd appreciate it, but...
Okay.
Not like us, we love to be here.
All right, uh, 11.12, Councilor Noon, request city manager to have DPW work with property owner 314 Sanders Avenue to clean up large sections of tree branch that had fallen in her yard. Seconded by Councilor Murcia, Councilor Noon.
Mr. Mayor, leave it to the Speaker, we have Register Speaker, sir.
Carol Nevada?
Hi, Carol Nevada, 314 Sanders Ave. On Saturday, July 17th, a city tree fell onto my property, barely missing my house, but some branches did land on the roof. It destroyed a small tree that I had in my yard. It damaged the lawn and the sprinkler system. A city worker came by that night and said they'd be by on Monday to remove the tree and they never came. Prior to this, I had requested that this tree and a few other city trees be removed or cut back. There are several other dead trees that are in really bad shape and they would hit my house if they fall. The city came by in 2018 and again in 2019 and said they would take care of the trees, but they never came back and they have never returned any of my phone calls. I would just like these trees to be cut down before they damage my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another one?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know the manager's going to work with the DPW to take care of it, you know, so, I thank you.
The Commissioner is here, I know they're aware of it. We have to contract it out, it's too big to do it by the city. They had hoped to be able to do it, but they can't. Um, I believe it requires a crane or something of that nature.
Sure, so we do have an annual contract with a tree contractor. And just with the new year, we're just going through that contracting process right now, opening up a PO with that contractor. So when we did go out to look, that does really require a crane and that is something that that tree contractor is required to have. So we were really hopeful that it would be done this week. Um, but we're, you know, we're at a point where we are trying to just, uh, have that contractor onsite immediately. Um, and we also recognize the other trees. So while we're out there, it makes sense to remove the other dead trees. Um, so that will be addressed.
Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Well, thank you.
All set? All right, thank you. Uh, 11.13, Councilor Noon, request Transportation Subcommittee to address speeding and cut through traffic on Lincoln Parkway and put measures in place to protect children that live and play in the neighborhood and those that walk to the Daily and Bailey School. Seconded by Councilor Elliott, Councilor Noon?
Well, we do also have the Register Speaker, thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Nevada. I live at 130 Florence Road, Lowell, Mass. I am here to request that the double yellow lines on Lincoln Parkway, Wedge Street, Lower Florence Road, Fleming Street, West Chester Street, and Campbell Drive not be repainted. They are neighborhood streets filled with walkers, runners, families with pets and small children. Most have no sidewalks, which compels us to walk in the street. When the construction is done and the roads are paved, please consider this request to not repaint the double yellow lines that disrupt the quality of life in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you all know that these, this street, Lincoln Parkway, a lot of school kid walk to and from school, Daily and Bailey. Not only that, but also you have neighborhood kid that's riding and running around there. So the cut through does happen and with this request, certainly going to lessen the cut through. So, um, I would respectfully ask that we looked into it and do what we can to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe we could have the lines painted black or, because they probably can't get the paint off, right? So maybe we could, uh, make them so they don't appear afterwards, the construction is done. Um, and then you said Council, uh, 10.5, Council? Uh, 10.5 National Grid, request to re, uh, request to relay a gas main at 1895 1939 Millsack Street with a 12-inch plastic pipe, uh, plastic gas main in sidewalk. So we're going to give the first reading? Okay, so just a motion by Councilor Murcia, second by Councilor Noon to refer to her hearing August 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. All those in favor say aye. All right, um, so just information on just the River's Edge. Madam Manager?
Yes, thank you. We do have a report. There had been a motion, um, for a report and update on what is happening at River's Edge. Um, Mr. Slagel did put together a report, including, um, the inspections that have been done even as recently as, as this week. Uh, conversations that have been had with the contractor, mitigation efforts that were requested. And, and I've been told by Mr. Slagel, they, those mitigation efforts have been done. Um, as far as, um, the, you know, dispute that's ongoing, uh, we don't, our role here is, uh, the city's role is regulatory in terms of, uh, if there's going to be any amendment to the plan. We haven't seen it. But the amendment would have to come forward to the appropriate boards. I think the report references that there are outstanding issues that have to be closed out, um, at boards and then a plan would have to be presented. Uh, Christine McCall is here, who I think can speak to the process. But it would require, um, the LHA residents first to come forward and get an amendment approved by DHCD, the state. Uh, the city council would have to approve that. And then, of course, the planning board would also have to approve that. So to date, we haven't seen that, uh, from, from LHA or from residents first. Um, but as far as the, uh, what work had been done out there, um, if, based on Mr. Slagel's report, work was done several years ago, but it was permitted both by the Conservation Commission. And, and looking at the property today, in 2021, there were requests made to, to do things, secure piles of, um, I don't want to say rubble, blasting materials that had been taken from the ground and also to, um, replace those bales of hay that were necessary along in the area of the wetlands.
Councilor Elliott?
Uh, thank you, thank you for the report. Um, I would like to send it to the Environmental Subcommittee. Um, I, I did read the report. Uh, I'm somewhat confused, um, to some degree, that at each particular phase, it seemed to indicate that the, um, the developers went to the Conservation Commission to amend the order conditions, that would make sense. Seems that back in 2009 was the last time the applicant amended the project to eliminate nine building lots, which is fine, but fast forward, we're talking 12 years later. Um, did they not go back to the Conservation Commission? Because even with that last amendment, they took nine lots out. It does about the wetlands. So, um, I appreciate, you know, the information, but, um, I'd like to refer this to the Environmental Subcommittee to get more information on that last order of conditions. It'd be nice to see the amended, the last order of conditions amended, Madam Manager, uh, back in 2009 to see what work was available. I'm glad you, I'm glad the city went out to do an inspection on July 14th. Um, but if the work was done in 2015, that's an awful long time that there were no inspections, which I'm not saying the city knew about it or not. Um, but it just seems like there are some more questions that, that I have that I'd like to... Um, and I, I think it was Councilor Noon that actually had the original, uh, motion relative to buffer zones and other concerns with the Conservation Commission. So if there's no objection, um, I think Councilor Noon and myself both sit on that Subcommittee. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilor Elliott, second by Councilor Noon.
Second.
Uh, all set? Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just got a couple of questions for those, um, Christian McCall or the city manager. So is there a current investigation going on with, with the property?
We, we don't know. Um, I know there was a mention at this city council meeting, but we have no knowledge of it. And, and I know I read in the newspaper that there was an outreach by a reporter where I believe the inspector general didn't confirm or deny.
And what, so was there any work that was done without proper permitting or, or...
Not to our knowledge.
Okay, and is there any contamination there as well when Mr. Slagel did his look? Was there any contamination found?
Uh, Christine McCall is here. Oh, Eric is on Zoom as well.
We have no knowledge of any contamination out onsite.
Okay, you know, there was some pretty damning allegations made at the last meeting. Um, so, you know, I, I think it needs to be clarified whether it's, it's true or not.
Hi, Councilor Elliott?
Sure, there were questions for the council. There were questions that I asked. They were raised, and Madam Manager, have we reached out to the housing authority? Have we reached out to anyone? Because I, I know you say that at some, you know, it's, our, our role is limited, but to me, the legislation doesn't say that. So these are questions that were raised, um, and I think we deserve information. If someone doesn't want to ask the questions, then I'm going to ask them. Because I think it's important, because we directly have a role in this and it was specifically mentioned in legislation adopted by the legislature. So there are some concerns. Um, it directly abuts the river. Um, and I'm just asking questions. If the work was permitted, that's fine, but 2015, the work was done and we just had the city go out a couple of weeks ago to find violations. And they're going to be corrected. So, um, there are questions, information that I want on behalf of the city council. Work doesn't want to ask those questions? And they're damning allegations? There weren't allegations. I was asking questions. Those piles had been sitting. Now we see that they have been moved, um, and relocated. Work was done. Um, so that's an awful long time to me, 2015, and there's no work. So, uh, if we haven't reached out, um, I understand, not allegations, I understand there is an inspector general, um, investigation or looking for information to determine whether they should go further. Council doesn't want to ask those questions, I will, because I think it's important to do that.
Yeah, there were no questions asked. There were statements made, that that's the difference. So unless there's something to back those up, which it seems like there's none to do so, the city went out there and took a look at it, those, you know, inquiries made, nothing was found of it. So, you know, other than the city council or the administration's role, other than regulatory, you know, why is it here?
All right, we'll find out when it goes to Subcommittee.
Counselor, if you want to ignore it, you can ignore it, but I'm not going to. It's tax, Mr. Mayor, it's taxpayer money. This was a huge project that I voted on and I'm going to make sure that, and many of us voted on, and we're going to see it through. And there's some inconsistencies with what's going on out there. There are some environmental issues that if I didn't bring them up, they weren't going to be addressed. So ignore them if you want, but I'm not going to.
All right, thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the Subcommittee, certainly we're going to learn something or not at that Subcommittee. So, um, you know, let's have the Subcommittee and then, you know, go from there if need be. Thank you.
All right, so any motion to accept the motion responses by Councilor Chow, second by Councilor Conway, uh, placed on file? Uh, reappointments, 4-3, reappointment of Bradley Buttenas to the Conservation Commission. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Samaras, second by Councilor Noon. Uh, 4-4, reappointment of Louise Vonham to Conservation Committee. Motion to accept, placed on file by Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Murcia. Reappointment of Sean Callahan to the zoning board. Motion to adopt, um, by Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Murcia, roll call.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Murcia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Thank you. Next, we have votes of the city manager. Motion of bundle, vote by Counselor Rourke, second by Councilor Chow. Uh, 5-1, vote to accept and expend Address Verification Program Grant 20280. Uh, vote to accept and expend Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant 25,000. Vote to accept and expend SSYI Grant 712346. Vote to apply and accept and expend Mass EVIP Grant 93941. Uh, motion by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Drinkwater, roll call.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Murcia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Could we do the next three votes together?
Uh, sure.
Well, we have 6.1 to, when do we do 6.1?
5.2, 5.3, 5.4.
Okay.
6.1, 6.17.
6.1 and then 7?
Then do 7.1 to 7.3 inclusive.
Okay, so do 6 and then get into the 7. So ordinance city manager, 60-day trial, permission to wear full rating, second read by title. Uh, Conwell, Massachusetts, city law, in city council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance and City Law, Massachusetts, concerning section 266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations... Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Motion by Counselor Mercier, second by Councilor Noon, roll call.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, and then, motion by Counselor Mercier to bundle 7-1 to 7-3?
Yes.
Second by Counselor Rourke. Ordinance of City Manager, ordinance amending Department of Public Works, established Division of Electricity, ordinance to create a position for ARPA Finance Manager, ordinance create position for Substance Use Prevention Grant Coordinator in the Health Department.
Motion to refer them all.
Yeah, motion to refer them all to, here, public hearing on August 10th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Motion by Counselor Mercier, second by Councilor Noon, I think I said.
Yes.
8-1, resolution, adopt Acts of 2018, Chapter 218, Section 15. Permission to waive the full rating, second reading by motion, by title. Conway, Massachusetts City of Lowell, in City Council, resolution, City Council of the City of Lowell wishes to go on record to support the Brave Act. Any questions, Counselor Elliot?
No questions. Thank you for bringing this forward, Madam Manager, this resolution. I think it's important that we adopt the Brave Act, which is why I filed the motion. It was adopted by the legislature in 2018, and the intent is to provide additional support to veterans and their families for those that made the ultimate sacrifice for this country by the Gold Star families. So, I think it's an important act that we adopt, and, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion by Council Elliot, second by Counselor Drinkwater, roll call.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Reports, Arts and Cultural Subcommittee, July 27th. Who is that?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, actually, 5:30, the Art and Cultural Subcommittee met with me, my colleague, Counselor Rita Mercier, and Counselor William Samaras. Joining us also, Counselor Rodney Elliot, Counselor Dan Rourke, and Counselor Conway. We have, in response to the Council endorsement of the Senate Bill 202246, an Act to Rebuild the Commonwealth Cultural Future, we have Senator Ed Kennedy present, as well as Director of Whistler House, and COVID-19 Cultural Impact Commissioner Sarah Boghossian also attend and present to the Subcommittee. Join also Staff of Counselor, Senator Kennedy, staff is James Osters and Jen Meyer. This Council vote to endorse this legislation a while back, and this legislation called for $200 million from, of federal money to come to the Commonwealth. Hopefully, some of those money will come to Lowell, should this legislation pass. As we all know, that COVID-19 has great impact, hit hard on the art, culture, and tourism in the Commonwealth, and Senator Kennedy spoke to that. Also spoke to that is the Director of Whistler House, that her organization closed for 16 months, no action, no activity whatsoever. The art on the month, then, recently, they start the Art on the Month program, an online cell on artwork, and it's started working a little bit, but also, she's starting as well, now, since the 16-month pass, this youth summer program for kids from age, eight to 16. So, that's, you know, starting outdoor class, actually. So, they hoping that, the Senators hoping that this, this legislation will help address some of the, the impact that this COVID-19 has had on the tourist, cultural, and the art community. The Council filed a motion as requested by Senator Kennedy, is that motion request the City Manager pull together a meeting of art, cultural businesses, and other representative to talk about the futures of Lowell with the art, because they indicated that artists, art and tourism is very important to the, the City of Lowell and to the Commonwealth. So, Counselor Mercier has asked, or maybe Counselor Samaras asked the Senator and Director of Whistler Houses, how do we see the art community now, can we, can we fix some of these problems? They said that we can, if we bring these people together, the group of organizations together to see how we can help them. And along with that is the suggestion of having a local public campaign to inform, you know, people about this legislation, how important it is, so that they can speak to and write to their legislators, so to speak. So, those is a report of the Art and Culture Subcommittee. I would invite my colleague to fill in any things I missed. Counselor Mercier maybe have something, as well as Counselor Samaras.
Anything to add, Counselor Samaras?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, it was a good Subcommittee meeting, and the thing is, we had asked as a group to, Senator Kennedy, but especially to Director Sarah Boghossian, you know, what effect did the COVID problem, you know, have on her program and many of the other art programs in the city? And she talked about the damage that's been done, but they also talked about, you know, how this city's been a leader in certain areas. So, the thing is, the one thing that we made the motion, Counselor Mercier and myself, along with Chairman Noon, was to have the City Manager bring a group together to really discuss the use utilization of the $200 million, plus those $25 million that's set aside with the cultural organizations from the state. But the issue is, what directions are we going to take from this particular point? There was a concern that they feel that COVID is coming back for the third time, you know, in other words, handcuffing the city and other programs from being able to do their jobs. But at this point, we should try to get together and see what we can do at this point to bring back the arts. There was a concern that Merrimack Repertory Theater's been closed down for a number of, for several months, for many months. There was, the, the different others, organizations that have been very active in the arts area have been closed. So, it's a matter of, we've got an opportunity here, let's take the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard from the Director of the Whistler House, Sarah, and she was very concerned about things that she saw that she liked very much, the barriers downtown for the cedary, and she, she loved that, she thought that was a great idea, but she never knew anything about that happening. And she, and she, what she said, and I feel is true, that this kind of like a disconnect between this group of artists, just because the Whistler House is there and there's the Lowell Arts Council here, everybody should be on the same page to know, this is happening here and this is happening there. They're all artists, and they should be knowing what everybody is doing. It's like, some councilors know something and some don't, it's, wouldn't be fair. So, that's the same principle, there's, like, for example, they're going to be, have an artist paint buildings, and, you know, murals on buildings. It would be nice if all the artists from the Western Avenue and the Whistler House, and everybody knew everything that was going on with each other. Sarah also made another suggestion, personally, I thought it was a great one, when I had the motion about the downtown and how its, its empty storefronts, well, you could put on a facade to make it seem a little bit more appealing. She thought that it would be a great idea to have this campaign whereby artists paint the windows and have a common theme, and instead of going through the downtown and seeing this window empty there or that one there, even people that have a business in there, to put like a theme, maybe it's flowers, I don't know, you could put the daisy over there or the modern glories here, that would be appealing to me, so I thought that was a pretty good idea. Sometimes, good ideas happen from other people and you just don't know it till they say it. I, I personally think it's a great idea, but that's just my personal point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noon.
I, I just want to add this, that the city supports the small business, especially the restaurant and outdoor setting. So, those art painting, the work, was done by the city, the city, the DPD department did that, and I learned that a, a number of those artists is from Lowell, so there's a good new, Counselor Mercier, that, that I commend, that the city administration for doing this, it was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Samaras.
Counselor Mercier brought up a good point, along with Counsel, Chairman Noon. I think we should make that, like to make that into a motion, that we ask the City Manager to get the proper department to look at, into the idea of identifying a number of empty buildings that are in the downtown, empty storefronts, and see if we can develop a project in which would allow artists to fill those windows with, with artwork. I mean, it requires some footwork, what have you, but Sarah Boghossian said that she'd be willing to work, you know, with anybody the City Manager would involve.
Thank you, yep.
So, we need a person?
Sure, motion by Counsel Samaras, second by Counselor Mercier. Madam Manager?
We'll get a response to the Council. These are great suggestions, but not all that easy to execute with private building owners, the Historic Commission, there's just a number of, of hurdles. You know, with regard to the barricades for the streetery, we did put that out to bid, and every Lowell artist that bid, we awarded the bid to them. So, individuals may not have been aware, I don't know why they wouldn't know, because we were very public about it, so we do our best to publicize everything we're doing in the downtown, whether it has to do with loans, whether it has to do with projects like the streetery, and we can look into some of these other things as well. But I just want to caution, I applaud the enthusiasm, I just want to make people aware that sometimes the more we dig into this, it gets very complicated very fast. So, we will certainly, you know, investigate and come back. And I do also want to point out that the Greater Lowell Community Foundation has been in the process of doing a cultural economy plan, which is very, very important. They received a very large grant from the Barr Foundation, they have hired a facilitator who is in the process of, of course, COVID shut things down, so that slowed down, but they're reaching out to all our assets, that includes artists, music, I mean, there is a huge process underway right now. So, I want to assure the community that this isn't something that people are sitting back on their heels waiting for, you know, good fortune to roll down Merrimack Street. The truth is that there's just been a tremendous amount of work, and is a tremendous amount of work, the city's working with the Community Foundation, they're working with all of the partners across the city on exactly what we're talking about, the cultural economy. How are we going to support the cultural economy going forward? And this is a very in-depth, very well-financed, and important study. So, I think though, the, I spoke with Jay Linehan about this more than once, I know Connor sits on that, I think Christine McCall is contributing to that as well, so we're all at the table on this. The other thing I want to point out, we do have a position that we're going to be having a public hearing on in two weeks, and that is to have someone, a position for administering the American Recovery Plan Act monies. As we've talked about here a lot, we're getting a lot of money over the next several years. There are many, many eligible expenses. One of them has to do with culture, has to do with, you know, the cultural economy. The state also, and I, again, with, with regard to the bill that was the subject matter, the state's getting money too, so there's a request in the Legislature to earmark some of their $5.3 billion, $200 million to culture. That might be a good start, but, you know, every community has been hit hard when it comes to culture. So, we may have opportunities to partner with the state on some of these, so that we can work together on these. So, we'll get a report, but I think the intent of creating this new position under the American Recovery Plan Act is to have someone, who is the point person, as we know, we've heard from the nonprofit community, and they're interested in that money. We, the, the arts community and the culture community is interested in that money. There's just a multitude of people who are eligible and are interested in how we're going to spend that money. It's going to take a tremendous amount of coordination and collaboration and working together to come up with what is the best plan for the City of Lowell. So, you know, having a, a discussion in group, I think that position is, is one that would naturally be at the table, but this is something that, as we move through, we're going to hear from many, many constituencies, and this being one of them. So, I think it's a good motion, I think it's an opportunity to use, to use the American Recovery Plan money in a smart way, that's going to enhance, quite frankly, our strengths in, in terms of arts and culture and destination and all of that, so. But we'll get you a full report.
Thank you. Need a motion, accept as a motion, accept the motions and accept it as a report of progress by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Chow.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yep.
Quickly, so, I went to call Neighborhood Subcommittee, and the subject matter, I was over off of Drake at Farragut and Fourth Ave over the weekend, numerous neighbors come to me about a rat problem that was going on over there. They reached out, I had her back, I guess, so, they asked me to bring it forward for a Subcommittee, since I was the chair of it. So, if we can schedule that, I'll be in touch with the clerk, hopefully for next week. But I just wanted to make it known to the Council that I want to bring it forward for our next week. Thank you.
Is that the Neighborhood Subcommittee, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Counselor, if you could forward the information?
Absolutely.
We don't have anything on it, so we could try and get somebody else.
Well, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have one person here actually going to speak on this motion, and I was wondering if we can suspend the rule, take 11.
I was going to say, we can get right through the petitions in like two minutes, two seconds, and then get right into the motion.
That's fine, sir. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, while we're under reports, we received, we just received a report on our desk from Manager's Office, I think, regarding Waste Management?
Yeah, that was going to come up in the?
It's regarding solid waste disposal, and if there's one issue we have, we listen, we hear a lot, is solid waste, so, while people are watching, can, can we get this report? Because it's, it's important, because it's, it's a major, it's a, it's a major issue.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're going to go right through the petitions, and we'll get right through the motions, that's like the third motion coming up.
This is a report on solid waste?
It's, it's in connection with two motions on tonight.
Oh, okay.
We just received it today, from Waste Management, as far as, I believe, Counselor, I think you have a motion, 11-1 and 11-4. So, though we normally get that response out to you at the next Council meeting, we did want to have a report tonight, so that, especially because it is so important, people are interested in knowing what's going on.
Great.
Okay. So, petitions, claim, we have a property damage claim, motion to refer a law department for reporting recommendation by Counselor Samaras, second by Counselor Noon. All those in favor? 10-2 miscellaneous, Christian Walks Building requests a dedication of land space at Lowell City Hall for public art installation, motion to refer a law department for reporting recommendation by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Chow. Miscellaneous, 10-3, Maria Matos requests installation of a handicap parking sign at 1374 Gorm Street, motion to refer traffic engineer for reporting progress by Counselor Samaras, second by Counselor Noon. And 10-4 miscellaneous, Louise Nevers requests installation of handicap parking sign at second by Council Conway. Motions, city council motions, first one, 11-1. Council Rourke requests city manager through DPW update the council and the public regarding waste management, waste management's yard waste pickup schedule for each neighborhood as well as what items are eligible to be collected, seconded by Council Noon. Council Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You want to take 11-4 as well, since it's pretty much the same thing?
Which one? Yeah, 11-4. Council Elliot requests city manager update city council regarding yard waste pickup schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a reoccurring, a reoccurring problem, obviously. You know, I did hear a lot about it early on in the spring. It seemed like they got caught up for, you know, maybe five or six weeks ago. But it's still, it's still happening now. You know, there have been people I've spoken to, just in Pataqueville alone, that eight, nine, 10 days behind on the yard waste pickup. And also, you know, they're being told that we have too many bags out, but if it's two weeks of yard waste out there, obviously it's going to be more than a single pickup, right? You know, and I know that there's a contract in place and that the city hopefully is finding waste management. You know, they are a global company and, you know, they should stick to the contract, knowing that if they find one thing in the recycle that's not supposed to be there, they charge us the whole ton, right? So there's got to be some accountability on their behalf. I see the, the, you know, the reasons or excuses in the letter we got, you know, trying to hire drivers and this and that. But, you know, I'm, I'm pretty positive that they don't cut any breaks to cities and towns that don't follow the rules. So, you know, for us to do that or, you know, to do anything other than to have them stick by the schedule that they agreed to, I think is to service, you know, to, to our residents. You know, it's something in the spring, summer in the fall, that shows heavily utilized. I mean, you see it in all neighborhoods in the city, that there are, there is yard waste everywhere. And obviously, the longer it stays outside, you know, and if it rains, it, it stinks, it creates a mess. And, you know, we really need to, so I guess lay the hammer down on them to say, look at, you know, we are, we are buying by our end. You know, we are paying more money by the year because of this. And, you know, for them not to hold their end of the bargain, you know, is to service not only to the city, but to its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot, thank Council Samaras.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. I really want to hear the manager provide the report. I did, I did read it briefly, it's a four-page explanation of what's taking place. But we contract for service. The people pay their taxes for that service. And we're charged accordingly. They had no problem finding us when there were violations. So, you know, it's, they say they value our relationship. Then, you know, if you can't get drivers, if it's a wage issue, raise, raise the rates. I know you had some trouble with COVID, but this just continues to continue. And residents are frustrated, and understandably so. When it rains and water gets in those barrels and they've been on, sitting on the street and then it's sunny, it stinks. And it stinks the neighborhood. So whatever they got to do to honor that contract, they have to do it because we have to honor our payment. If we came up with excuses on not paying them, I'm sure that wouldn't sit too well. So appreciate the explanation. Same thing in the solid waste. I mean, get to hire more drivers. If you can't attract them, then like we're trying to do with our position, you have to be competitive. So those are my, my comments from people who are frustrated. I know you are too, Madam Manager, but it's just not acceptable any longer. So is there anything else? Particularly with the solid waste, you have people at home, they're home more, there's more solid waste. They should know that, you know, after month one or two, they got to anticipate more drivers because there's more trash. And we're paying for it. I guess that's it, we're paying for it. So I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Samaras, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, but this is a very timely motion by Council Rourke and Council Elliot. I do know this past week, especially in the Belvedere area, there were just a number of streets, they had no pickup of the, of the yard waste. And I'll tell you, I think one of the biggest problems is people just don't know if it's going to happen. There's a fear that we won't pick up that waste. And then, as has been mentioned, it, the, the grass will smell, I mean, the odors, I mean, these are things that people are concerned with. But I think, Madam Manager, I don't know if there's a way we can send out a blast or something in the, in the neighborhoods to say, okay, there's been a delay for some reason. In other words, the people I talked to, once I was able to call the administration and get some answers, they relayed their fears, okay? And they were pleased about it. And one person said, I went up and down the street talking to the various neighbors. But there has to be some way where we notify our citizens that, yes, there's a problem, but this is what's going to, you know, give us some time. This will be straightened out. But, you know, I just, I received a number of calls this week, you know, regarding the problem of yard waste. And it's, it's really a concern. And I know you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Conway, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I'm glad that two councils have put these motions on. Back a few weeks ago, I put a motion on in regards to have the city manager take a look at the possibility of, of having a weekly pickup on the, on the yard waste. And again, some of the comments, I'm just, am echoing what, what the councils have said. It's the smell, it's disgusting. And when they were supposed to pick them up, they never show up. And at this particular point, I almost, I look at it myself, I'm putting the yard waste out too. And I'm, I'm saying, there's no way on earth they're going to be there on time. And sure enough, they're not. And it is frustrating. A lot of people are very upset about it. And not only, you know, we have those, those, those large paper bags that people will put them in too. So most people, I think, are pretty diligent, getting, getting, getting those bags out on time. And when they're sitting there two or three days and it rains, quite often those bags will break open. And again, the excuses, I think, from this company, you know, it's, it has to stop and there has to be some type of change. We can't keep on repeating this week after week. So again, I think you, you hear the frustration, we hear the frustration, and hopefully there can be some type of resolution that is going to fix this situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everybody's comment because I was as frustrated as everybody else. I did receive many, many calls. The most that I have ever received quite lately with all the, the people that were concerned about their yard waste not picked up in time. And it was the smell. I thought Duck Island smelled bad at certain times. You would have thought I lived on a farm. And even Shaw Farms with his 50 cows didn't smell at all compared to what smelled in front of my house. But it, it's the fact that there's bags as well, and it rained so darn much that I'm sure that when they lifted the bags up, they probably broke. It was a real darn mess. So I'm just saying what everybody else said because it was very frustrating. And the people called and we told them the best that we could as to what the situation was. But still, they faced that problem and it was tough. Thank you.
Really? Council Chow?
You forgot my name, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the same frustrations as my colleagues and the residents. And I did not get a chance to read this report that was given to us during this meeting. And I'm not even quite sure if this question makes sense, if it's worth anything. But this, this looks like a, we do have a very frustrating and unsatisfactory contractual relationship with, with management. What that leads to is like, is the question of when, when does this contract expire? Do we have, you know, would you expand on that? And because this seems to be going on for a long time. And how much longer do we have the contract with them?
Sure, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I believe it's next year. Yeah, it's a calendar year, it's not a fiscal year. And, and let me be clear, the letter on your desk is not our report. I'm only sharing it because I just received it today from Waste Management. We will have a full report. And we can, we can verbally give you some information and report tonight. But I just want to make clear that this isn't, this isn't our report to the council. It's just sharing their, what their explanation has been.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, I know the manager's office must have received dozens and dozens of calls because everyone sitting here do receive calls. And as we canvassing, you know, go door to door, people tell us how frustrated they was with the pickup. You know, the reason in this report to you, Madam Manager, the reason for this report by the Waste Management is unacceptable. The reason for the delay, the untimely pickup, labor shortage, increased collection demand, shortage of pot needed to keep the truck in service, that's really ridiculous. You know, those are stuff that they can't, you know, prepare ahead. It shouldn't be, it's not a reasonable, you know, excuse. And when you hear, when the resident hear of this, it's like, what? You know, we pay them to do this service. If this is the kind of service we get, then we ought to rethink whether or not we should renew their contract. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Sure, Madam Manager?
Thank you. Let, let me just say at the outset, we too share the concerns and have been inundated with calls. We're very well aware of what's happening. Sometimes we don't know. We may think they're going to make a pickup and they don't, or they tell us they will and they don't. And so it's very difficult to tell people in real time until we're told. And, and let me just say, we are on this daily. There was a period in the spring where they fell behind. They did recover. They, you know, were able to catch up. One of the things we did back then, and we're still doing around the parks, you know, one of the biggest complaints is they weren't getting to pick up the trash in the parks because they were so far behind on the residential pickup. So we, the city, took that over. We're picking up the trash in the parks now, just to, and, and getting a credit, I want to be clear, we're not paying them for the parks. We are also working with them because as this council voted was to buy our own truck for purposes of picking up trash in the parks. Like everything else, that's been delayed until next spring. So we don't have that truck now. We're using a truck that's not in very good shape. But we are negotiating with them to have them give us a truck for a dollar for the time between now and when that, our truck is available. So that's some of the things we, we've been doing proactively to try and address the challenges. You know, we, the latest report that you have, and this is from Waste Management, you know, they, they have outlined what their, what their challenges have been. They've told us, which, which we agree with. We want them to prioritize solid waste and recycling first and yard waste after that, because it would be much worse if we didn't have the solid waste or picked up on a regular basis. They're caught up on those. But they are behind on the yard waste, no doubt about it. Christine Clancy is here. She can speak more directly to the exact schedule. But they have outlined for us what they're playing, what they are doing to get more drivers. They're short drivers. They can't hire drivers. They have some equipment issues. But we're fining them. So, but lodging fines doesn't get the yard waste picked up. But I want people to know, we have instituted and implemented fines and continue to do that and assess the fines. But we need to come to a resolution together. And then, and as you see in the report, they're trying to encourage and hire drivers. They told us that they've lost drivers. People don't want to work in the, in the post-COVID environment in this industry. Or they've lost drivers to places like Amazon, and where they'd rather deliver boxes than pick up, you know, trash. They have sign-on bonuses they're offering now, $7,500. They've got referral bonuses, $3,000. So, and believe me, we're all frustrated. But I think based on their report, they're hoping to have in the next weeks recovered by having drivers. It's a matter of having the drivers and the trucks to do timely pickup. So Commissioner Clancy, can you add to that?
I think that's a great summary. I will say, in our meeting that we had, we've had a lot of meetings with Waste Management, a lot of discussions on the status of, are there delays? And especially last week, in talking about some of those negotiations on leasing that truck, one thing that we recognize is that it's hard for us to see when we, we receive the calls. And DPW is receiving sometimes unfortunately hundreds of calls on some of these days where we were, you know, five days behind going back in May, and then just as of last week, three, three days behind. We realize that it's really important for communication. So one thing also that we've implemented is we ask for a daily report. And that daily report includes a GIS map of where their trucks drove. And that's not just reported to our solid waste and recycling coordinator, but to myself and to the city manager's office. And that comes in just about the end of the day, between four and, and five. So that's where we, we do update the city website, the solid waste and recycling website, to try to anticipate the, the delay on, on yard waste. And I mean, if also if that delay does continue, we could look at maybe Facebook, social media blast if needed. I will say, as of today, they had, so they have added, I think, two, with the report says, I think, two drivers. So they are able to then fill two more trucks. So as of the end of today, they, tomorrow, their focus is to do Monday, or Monday and Tuesday. So hopefully that really leaves them then on, so today's Tuesday, so essentially like a day behind. And then hopefully they completely recover by, by Thursday. So that would be helpful. And then continuing to move forward, we would, they'd be adding drivers. So hopefully then we don't, you know, bounce back to a delay. I think that summarizes. I don't know if there's any specific questions?
We can, we can get you the full report. I mean, they did work Saturday. They are trying to make this up. But, you know, the condition is such that they're short drivers. So any given, you know, bump in the road can result in falling behind again. And that's why I know Commissioner Clancy and the Law Department speaking with them asked, what is your recovery plan? You know, what, what are you going to do to get these drivers? What are you going to do to fill your obligations under the contract in the City of Lowell? Plain and simple, you, you know, you, as has been said here tonight, is a contractual obligation. We're contractually obligated to pay. However, you know, if you're not performing that, and if you're set up to chronically fall behind, that's a problem. And it's a problem, I realize, it's, and, and we have many other materials they forwarded, it's a national problem and so forth. I get it. I get it. But, you know, not picking up either solid waste or recyclables or yard waste is a huge problem. And these contracts are not cheap. So we expect, you know, the performance. So we'll get you a report. I do think it's a good suggestion. We do have it on Facebook. I think it's on the app. You know, if you have the Waste Management app, when you go on and it will tell you. And I'm, I want to make sure that we're updating that. So let's say Pataqueville isn't picked up, they're, when can they expect it? Can they go on the app and find that out in real time? So we'll look into that. But I think communicating to people when there is going to be a delay. But as I said, sometimes we don't know in advance. There have been days that we thought they were getting all of a certain neighborhood, and then it, there was two trucks that broke down. So they couldn't finish. And, you know, they, we don't know that till the end of the day, as far as those kinds of things. That said, we, we do know they need to do a better job. They know that. And so we're working daily with them on this.
Thank you. Council Mercy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you to Madam Manager. Do you know what we're paying as a city just for the yard waste?
Uh, I don't.
I'm sure you don't have the figure at the top of your head, but could we? I'm sure you don't have the figure at the top of your head, but could we have?
Yeah, I think, I think what comes to mind was somewhere around $40,000 a week, but I could be wrong. We'll get you the figure. I do know we were looking, when we asked, to find out how much we had to add back in. No, it wasn't, we'll get you the exact figure.
Because I'm thinking, just take out the yard waste and figure out $40,000 a week or whatever.
It's probably not a week. It was probably over the summer.
Would it be more feasible to get a truck and put two people on it than to, I don't know, I'm just thinking?
Yeah, I mean, we're doing that for the parks. That's a stretch.
Maybe we're going back to where we're picking up our own?
We're a long way in terms of the investment on that. We looked at everything. We will look at it, but I don't think that's feasible, that the trash at the parks is probably about as far as we can, you know, feasibly stretch it.
I wouldn't say to pick up the trash.
Right.
But the, but the leaves or yard waste, I don't know. Could we just figure that out?
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Without mathematician here.
Christine.
So that's something that I think we did just talk about, like what it would it take? And I think it would take considerable resources, both in really a fleet. I mean, that's, we can't just purchase another vehicle, lease another vehicle. You're talking a fleet to go around and be able to catch up with yard waste. And so it's just something that we're really not set up to do. I mean, you're talking not just adding a truck. That truck that we're adding is just for the park barrels. And that is a stretch, you know, that is, I think, what we can take on. But beyond that, you're talking about adding a fleet and then, you know, maintenance of that and resources. So you're talking, you know, several people too. So it's just, it's such a large, and also right, Waste Management does, they take on that yard waste and they, they have their own facility where they, you know, take, they compost or they take care of it. That's something that we would have to provide that facility. So it's just a huge, huge undertaking. And just back to that cost, I think there was a recent motion response because it was asked if we added it weekly. And I don't want to quote, and I think it was like $8,700 a week to add it. But, you know, that's something that they, they said they can't take on. But I think we can follow up. It was provided in a recent motion response, so we could just pull that up probably to verify that number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer, the quick one, and we'll get a report, is there was a motion asking to pick up weekly in July and August that Council Conway had. And I believe the response was that not only could Waste Management not do it because they don't have the capability, but it would also be an additional $40,000 under the contract.
Okay, thank you. Just want to thank everybody for getting back when you answer your calls and then thank the manager's office, especially Kara, for all the calls you get every day and all the responses that you get back to us. So it's been a lot of work over the last, probably a month or so. So everybody's working very hard. We're all very frustrated, but the manager's office has been inundated with this. So thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One last thing, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, it's not on it. I just want to, may I suspend the rule, ask to suspend the rule to take 11.16 motion out of orders because we have a registered speaker who's patiently wait.
Second. Motion by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Elliott to take 1116?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Noon requests city manager provide, have proper department look into installing a tall net at McPherson Park to keep softballs from damaging the homes of abutting neighbors. Councilor Noon? Oh, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Noon?
We do have a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not going to say anything after his.
Corey Ann Robinson.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. Thank you, Council. I've been out a lot in the neighborhood lately and something that was brought to my attention recently, McPherson's Park, which the neighborhood's thrilled. The softball tournaments that are going on, it's, they're keeping it spotless, no problems at all there. Unforeseen circumstance, unfortunately though, a lot of the homes around 18 Eustis on that side of McPherson's Park are getting nailed with softballs. And there has been some damage. And I'm hearing this repeatedly from quite a few residents that live along that side of McPherson's Park. Maybe we look at potentially extending posts and if there's a net laying around somewhere, set it up in the spring, take it down in the winter and to preserve it. But any help that you guys could provide to protect some of those homes and property over there would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yeah, we just, Corey, we had a question about your motion. So there are three fields. Is it all of the fields? Is it just one of the fields?
No, it's just the one field. The residents along Eustis have, around 18 Eustis have, that general area is where the damage seems to be occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Back to the agenda. 11:02, Council Rook requests city manager contact UMass Lowell and Mass Perk regarding public outreach invitation plan to increase proper use of recycling pickup. Seconded by Councilor Chow. Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mass Perk is, it's a public interest research group that works with college students and they do have a UMass Lowell part of their, of their nonprofit organization. And this is, this is what I think we need Madam Manager for the recycling program. We talked previously about different ways to inform neighborhoods, to provide outreach, the proper use of our recycling, you know, those costs are skyrocketing yearly. I did speak to the regional director from Mass Perk who said they'd be very interested in doing something like this and partnering with UMass Lowell chapter of their organization. And what they would do is, is they could canvass neighborhoods with pamphlets and with information and to talk to residents about the proper use of the recycling, what can go in there and what's not allowed. And, you know, this is something that the group takes pride in doing. And they work on these types of issues year round. And they expect, you know, obviously their student body back in sometime in the middle of August. And they seem excited about the prospect of working with the city with this issue. So I thought I'd bring it forward for council approval, to bring it to your attention. And hopefully we can reverse the trend of the cost of our recycling program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on that? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Mercy requests city manager have proper department place a berm in front of 110 and 124 Barber Street and the other, any other home on Barber Street that has had their front yard soil running down the street and washing away. Seconded by Council Sumeris, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion more or less speaks for itself, but I want to just a little elaborate to say that these two families are very concerned about all the rain that we had and the soil just running down from their front yard down, down the street. I don't think personally, myself, that it's too much to ask to put a berm in front of each one of those homes. I was told that they don't do berm anymore. Well, it's about time you restarted it up again. These people are not asking for an act of Congress. They just want some berm in front of their house. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I was told that the asphalt prices have gone up, so have their taxes. So I feel that I would, I'm not asking for the world, I'm just asking as their, my constituents to try to get that done. And I want to just say another thing. I realize that when I made this motion like a month ago in June, I made it with the understanding, at least I thought I spoke a little bit knowledgeable or clear, that I wanted this done in this fiscal year '22 budget. I know that in June, when we're going into the, ending of the June budget, the budget in June, that there's very little funds left. I've been here long enough to know that, I know what a budget looks like and what's going on with the money. So to say that I wasn't aware of it, I should have known better. I did know better. And I'm asking for it, for this, you prepare for it. So I was asking for this to be done in the '22 budget. I don't think that with a half a million, a billion dollar budget, I don't think it's too much to ask for some berm. So I would look forward to getting it for the people that have asked for it. And I don't think they've ever asked for anything, so I don't see what the big deal is. So thank you, Madam Manager.
Council Rook, then Council Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow a little bit on that, there was a resident, I think on Eliza Circle, that had reached out to the city and had spoke to a couple of engineers, I believe. And him and his wife were told that a berm would go in. And then he contacted me the other day and was told that now it's not going to happen. So I'm just curious to see what, what the actual is going to happen over there. I know that when initially the reach out was done and a site visit was conducted, that a berm was going to go in. So if you just get an update on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliott?
Thank you. I was just going to mention, I've been on Barber Terrace and the slope on the road and the crown channels all the water into these particular properties. There is a catch basin. I'm at the bottom, so it does make some sense that we want to channel all the water all the way down the street into catch basin. So it does make some sense.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion, Council Elliott requests city manager contact Mass Environmental Police regarding jet ski operation enforcement on the Merrimack River next to the falls. Seconded by Council Mercy. Council Elliott?
If there's no objection, could we combine 11, motion 11:07?
11:14?
14, I'm sorry, but Council Noon, similar motion on jet skis on the river.
Sure. 11:14, Council Noon requests city manager have proper department address operations of jet skis, boats who disregard the rules of safety operations of watercraft on the Merrimack River before unnecessary injuries occur. 11:14. Council Elliott? Seconded by Council Elliott?
I think the motions, they do speak for themselves. We had two fatalities there a number of years ago and the council took action to prevent jet skis, working with the state, excuse me. But absent of enforcement, there are a lot of jet skis that are now ignoring, you know, the restriction and they're, it's, it's another dangerous situation waiting to happen. I did receive calls, complaints or concern residents calling about the number of jet skis. I've been down there myself, Madam Manager. I know it's a, it's a mass environmental police or whatever the combination of law enforcement that we have used, including the city Lowell. So that's the motion. Council Noon can probably add more, how do we prevent more fatalities? And, you know, we restricted that there's no jet skis down there, but there's a whole lot of them.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Elliott is correct. And I know that we'll leave it to the managers to, you know, see what we can do and be proactive about this is because this is, you know, we need to enforce it, ticket it, you know, before something happened. I know it's not our, in our responsibility, but the environmental police probably can help us, you know, do what needs to be done to, you know, enforce any violations on, on the river. Thank you.
Thank you. All, Madam Manager?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, we'll get you a full report. I do know in talking to the police department, our own police boat is out on the river from 12 to 8 every Saturday and Sunday and some evenings. The Merrimack, they have a Merrimack River Task Force that we're coordinating with the environmental police as well. And Chelmsford Police at times participate in this. So, so they are coordinating and we'll get you the data on that. I think one of the things to bear in mind too is we have officers, especially the weekend days, on the boat ramp because that's where they can stop people who are unregistered or what have you from putting boats that shouldn't be in the water into the water. So we'll, we'll get you that update. But they have taken many out of the river and we'll have that report.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliott requests city manager have DPW address the overgrowth of trees and brush on Kelly Circle and add a street light and a sign that states no parking from here to corner. Seconded by Council Drinkwater. Council Elliott?
The motion speaks for itself. I do have a petition signed by all the residents on Kelly Circle. I've been there, it is dark. There are lights, they shine into the Duvo Manor. I did speak to the commissioner of this, of DPW, she is aware of it and I know there's a long list, but the residents would appreciate it. There's 11 schoolchildren on that street and it's right off Barnum Ave. So having a no parking sign, they'll have a place to stand. And if we can cut back the trees and the brush where the kids stand, they would be very grateful. So I'll just submit this as part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight by Council Elliott requests city manager provide a report regarding oil spots on numerous streets of Pataqueville. Seconded by Council Mercy. Council Elliott?
That motion does speak for itself as well. Maybe that's what you were referencing earlier, if trucks break down from Waste Management? I don't know, but I get calls that, you know, they were, you know, these oil stains or, could that be, could that be part of it, Madam Manager?
Yeah.
Madam?
And what do they do to?
Clean it.
To clean it or restore it to the?
Apparently the streets that we had gotten complaints and went out and looked, it was from the yard waste trucks that were leaking and leaving a slick on the road. Commissioner may know more about this, but we'll get, we'll get that report. But it looked like oil, but it was the, the.
Nasty.
Yeah.
Nasty.
So we had the.
Okay.
Yard waste and the oil slicks.
I can provide an update on that. So that happened on Tuesday, July 20th, and we did receive a call, I think from Councilor Rourke on this. And so we immediately looked, so when we do get a report of hydraulic spill or oil spill, that's something that we go out, we look at. If it is in fact, we also do notify the fire department just because it's a hydraulic spill or oil spill on the roadway. When we went to this, the site, we did see that it was following the track of the yard waste or it was behind the yard waste truck. And it wasn't oil, it was more just like the wet, the wet yard waste, so water. So it was like that, that decomposing water that was being tracked all over the neighborhood. We didn't see oil remnants, like any oil slicks in the roadway. We also did follow up with Waste Management because sometimes that also results with the, they have a hydraulic line break. And they had no failures that day on any equipment. So it didn't seem to be related to any, any oil.
Thank you.
I just bring it forward from what I hear, so that's what they.
Thank you. Council Rook?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When it happened last week, I contacted the manager's office and had some pictures that I forwarded so Waste Management could take a look at and the city. And obviously it was found not to be oil or anything that could be hazardous. It was just, you know, dirty water, I guess you would say, from grass coverings that, you know, probably picked up a little bit late. So thank you, Madam Manager and Commissioner Clancy for working quickly on it, you know, within a day or two, you know, most of the streets were all set and they just needed a good rainstorm. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliott requests city council vote to continue sidewalk on Barnum Ave from Dowling Drive to Constance Drive. Seconded by Council Noon. Council Elliott?
Motion speaks for itself. I know a number of years ago when I had put motions on to extend the sidewalks from Old Ferry and at that time we ran out of money. But there are a lot of people walking in that stretch from Dowling to Constance. There's no sidewalks and we know how fast people drive on Barnum Ave. So this came from folks, a couple of folks, asking, you know, what are we going to do? So can we put this into the queue and at some point extend those sidewalks right down to Constance, which is the Tingsborough Line, very, they'll be used. So that's the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Noon, oh, excuse me, Council Conway requests city manager invite disability commission to the next city council meeting to pres- Disability Commission to the next city council meeting to present the commission's end-of-the-year report, seconded by Counsel Mercy or Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very honored to be part of the Disabilities Commission, and I know that each and every one of them have worked extremely hard this year. So, I think it might be a good idea that the end-of-the-year report is being compiled at this point, and the Disabilities Commission will be ready to present this year-end update to the city council. I talked to the, some of the members, and they, and they thought that, that the next meeting, there is still information coming in, very pertinent information, and they wanted to wait for next month's, next month's meeting. And that perhaps you and the head of the disabilities can coordinate that. Because they're very excited, very excited about giving the report, and there are many accomplishments. And I think city councils should be aware of the positive things that's happening, and the city should be aware of it also. So, that's the motion, and if you could just check with them, they'll be very happy to present. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion by Counsel Conway, request city manager report on city's plan against ransomware attack. That will ensure that all city departments have sufficient protocols and updated technology to prevent hackers from compromising our systems to further ensure that this is a sufficient security on the city's voting and tabulating machines, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do believe this motion speaks for itself. I think it's important that we, that the council and the city know exactly, you know, what is our protocols for the different departments, and whether we have the updated technology that's going to help fight against any type of ransomware attack. And also, keeping in mind, we have the elections coming up, and we certainly want to make sure that it's as fair as possible. And again, what do we have in place that's going to help to ensure that? So, I look forward to the report, so that we can, we can go from there. And if we need to enhance that in any way, I'm sure the council would certainly be willing to do it, because we want to make sure our systems are well protected. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Counsel Noon, 11:11, request city manager proper department work with the property owner at the corner of Stevens and Parker, near the tall hedges, to find consensus and offer variance for fencing on property, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This corner of Parker and Stevens, this hedge, very tall, that driver coming out of Parker really cannot see that while until you almost, you know, cross the line. So, people coming Stevens, accidents has happened in those corners a number of times. So, I know that this issue was brought up at the Highlands Neighborhood Meeting. So, I spoke to the owners, she's the owners of, the owner of Parker and Stevens, the property that owned that tall hedge. So, she, she willing to, because she wanted to cut it down, she want to put a fence, but per code, you have, if you put a fence, you have to move, you know, almost take, take away that little, you know, yard area that she has for her kid and for her tenant. So, she said, "Look, I want to take it down, I want to put a fence, but, you know, put it where the hedge is at." So, we need to find a way to help her with, you know, address the issue of variant to do that. So, whenever this happen, she willing to cut the hedge down and put a fence there. And that's going to help a lot of drivers coming out of Parker and those who coming into Stevens, avoid any future accidents, should there be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Counsel Noon, request city manager work with D P D to honor comprehensive list of incentives, federal funding, tax programs that will encourage downtown building owners to develop upper floors, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Noon.
I think similar motion was filed last meeting by Counsel Mercy. I think the city, this administration particularly, have done so much for the downtown, and with the money put into how we promote law, in the downtown area in particular, as well as with the small businesses, restaurants and whatnot. We even give a startup money for some of the loan, startup money for the, some of the This is another way of continue to do more, you know, and incentive, particularly for the downtown building owner, who wouldn't otherwise want to do anything up there, because either code issue, or, you know, they don't want to spend money on it. So, maybe this way, a fine way to be incentivize them, either through, you know, looking for federal funding and/or maybe tax program to encourage them to do work up there, because those are the, the foot traffic that certainly is going to help at least the businesses down there, the storefront that we want to, you know, to have them grow and be of a business engine for the city. So, and that's why I thought that maybe this is an additional step that the city, you know, do to help promote downtown and make it, you know, nice. Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motions of the night, by Counsel Chow, request city manager investigate a veteran banner program and explore Main Street locations for honoring the veterans of law, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first time in a long time, I have more than two minutes to speak on my motion. So, I'm requesting the city manager have D P W coordinate with appropriate departments to investigate putting up U S flags along the main streets that enter each of the city's new eight districts. I'm thinking about a main street that would be considered an entrance into each of the new districts. For example, in downtown, this could be somewhere along Central Street and Merrimack Street. South Law could be the beginning of Goom Street. Beverly Dear could be the beginning of Andover Street. And the lower Highlands, I would imagine, Westwood Street, Copper Square, and Bryant Street around the Cambody Town, and so forth. In addition, I request the city manager have appropriate departments investigate and explore creating a family veterans' heroes banners programs, where families may sponsor a flag of a veteran hero of their choice and pay a fee. I've seen towns like Hayrow and Chelmsford, and their main streets really show their residents support the veterans from their towns. There's no reason why we can't do this in our city as well. The fees collected can defray the cost of our city employees working on this and the materials for the program. I understand currently D P W put up U S flags in our parks around Memorial Day and take them down after Pearl Harbor Day, which is around December 7. I'm thinking the family veterans' heroes banners, flags can be put up and taken down at the same time. We all talk about supporting our veterans and active military duties men and women. This is one way to show our support and gratitude through honoring them with these flags and heroes banners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion, Counsel Chow, request city manager investigate repairs and improvements to the public roadway and sidewalks along Hale Street in the area of the Glory Buddhist Temple, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Glory Buddhist Temple is very popular. On any given weekend, you have hundreds of pedestrians and vehicles just going to temples. In addition to the regular traffic on Hale Street, the road condition is, has a lot of potholes, a lot of lip and the sidewalks are broken, have a lot of lips. Going back to Glory Buddhist Temple on a holiday, which is about three, four times a year, the Southeast Asian holidays, you literally have thousands of pedestrians walking on the sidewalks or crossing the streets, and I think it's just accidents waiting to happen. If you could look at that street, the roadway and the sidewalk, to see what can be done, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion tonight, Counsel Chow, request city manager investigate the costs and improvements necessary to upgrade Duck Island to prevent untreated direct sewage discharges into the Merrimack River, including contact with state delegation regarding emergency funding possibilities and F Y 2022, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to the excessively heavy rains, the city floor discharged 84 million gallons of rainwater and raw sewage directly into the Merrimack River on April 29th. This happened over a period of 12 hours. There was an additional discharge of rainwater and raw sewage of a significant, again, significant amount again on Memorial Day weekend. These emergency discharges are called combined sewer overflows, or C S Os, to environmental officials. The discharges are made when our antiquated infrastructure at our Duck Island Clean Water Facility is overwhelmed by the sudden amount of liquid forcing it to discharge everything in the system, including raw sewage into the Merrimack River. This discharge is an emergency situation to prevent a backup and backwash of raw sewage into the homes of our residents. Law, Lawrence, McPhewan, and Tewksbury all drink water taken from the Merrimack River. Effects of these discharges are detected and high bacterial levels, as far away as New bury Port, where the river discharges into the ocean. Residents of Law and each of these communities also use the Merrimack for recreational activities like swimming and boating. Recently, the State Secretary of Energy and Environment stated that swimming after rainstorms and C S Os have adverse public health outcomes. In the areas of public health for our residents, preservation of one of our greatest natural resources, the Merrimack River, and concern for how we affect our climate and our environment for future, we have a responsibility to address this ongoing issue. Our facilities to handle this are old and outdated. However, the dangers caused by continuing these emergency-induced discharges need to be addressed and managed for the benefit of all our residents and those downstream who drink and need a healthy Merrimack River. I understand this will be an expensive issue, however, I am requesting the manager to investigate the issues involved in the problem and report back to the council with the remedial options and costs associated with the unfortunate and unhealthy situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot.
No, after, after he's done, I wanted to suspend the rules.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Counsel Elliot.
Thank you. I know we don't meet for another couple of weeks. A motion to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend the rules by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Elliot.
And part of the motion is to, just, I have filed the motion for the next council meeting, but it's not for two weeks. But some information came to me, and I did speak to the manager about it earlier relative to the sale of a piece of property up in Pottuckerville. I believe it's going to be, Raleigh's Farm is about to be sold, and I believe it's going to a good entity. I just think it's important for us to do everything we can as a city. I know it's a private piece of property, but, you know, Raleigh's Farm has been, it's a tricky part of Pottuckerville, and, and the people that have, you know, that have come accustomed to in the summertime, go and get corn, citywide. So, I, my understanding, and I didn't know, Madam Manager, that you have met with some organizations, but I have been speaking to Raleigh himself, and he did let me know that it's going to be sold. It'll be sold to the Audubon Society, and I just want to ensure that the city reaches out, we have a partnership. It's not going to happen for a couple of years. He told me it's, it'll finish this year with vegetable farming, and the next two years it'll continue to harvest trees, Christmas trees. So, I think this is a good thing. I just want to ensure that we, you know, that we make every effort that we can to preserve this natural resource up in Pottuckerville, and I just think it's important that we reach out. And he told me, you know, the papers haven't been signed yet. So, until those papers are signed, and that it does take place, I think we have to keep our, you know, keep our pulse on it. So, it's, you know, it's kind of sad. He, he and his father moved from South Dakota in 1953, and he's been there ever since. And he's going to stay there, by the way, and, in the house, and I do think that's important. But, 68 years, that's, people know Raleigh's Farm, and it's sad, but I think the good news is that it's going to be, you know, it will be preserved. And if this, you know, the city asks to participate with community preservation, funding at some level, or to work in the future for, you know, whatever that land is going to be used for, at least we're going to do everything we can to preserve that open space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note that on Saturday, August 7th, from 2:00 to 3:00, is the Puerto Rican flag raising. And then the very next day, Sunday, August 8th, from 9:00 to 10:30, is the Laotian flag raising. And we do have a policy in this city that where the flag raising one day after the other, that we leave each one of those nationalities flagged up for a week. That is the policy here. So, and I'm going to explain it when I go, because when the Puerto Rican flag goes up, and then they go by in the next day and see somebody else's, they'll probably wonder, "Well, what happened to us?" So, I think they will know that their flag will be up for a week after the week from the Laotian flag raising. So, just a note. Thank you.
Well, we're still on the suspension, I just want to bring in a motion. I put a pamphlet on your desk, and I didn't file a motion, I forgot to. But I wanted to just start the process, so I wanted to do a motion to start the sister city project with Bamako Mali. So, if there's any objection, just want to start that. Counsel Elliot, all set? So, motion, yeah, okay. So, all in favor? Any other announcements? All set? Thank you. Motion adjourned by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Chow.